Good evening. At this time, I would like to open the monthly meeting of the Isle of Wight County School Board. Today is Thursday, September 8th, the year is 2022. Isle of Wight County School Board meets for their regular meeting at West Side Elementary School unless otherwise noted. And we are always preparing students for college, career, and life. At this time, we will have a roll call.
Mrs. Dial, Mr. Vines, Mrs. Tynes.
Here.
Mr. Cunningham.
Present.
And Mr. Collett.
Present.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda, approval of the agenda and amendments, or amendments.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to add the following: Adult breakfast and lunch meal price increase.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Madam Chair, I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor. At this time, if there are no discussions, we will have a vote.
Not seeing anything yet.
I don't have it.
There we go.
I got it.
I don't.
Okay.
Oh, I got it now.
Thank you. Okay, next we will have a motion to go into closed session.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to go into the closed, closed meeting. Number one, to review the personnel report and addendum posted on board docs under Personnel tab number 17 dot 1 as authorized by Virginia Code 2 dot 2 dash 3711A1 for purposes of discussion and consideration of prospective candidates of Isle of Wight Public Schools for employment, contract changes, transfers, supplemental contracts, supplemental pay for additional classes, SLT, summer planning stipends, and resignations of Isle of Wight County Public School employees. Number two, to discuss the assignment promotion and demotion of specific leadership and administrative positions in central office as authorized by Virginia Code 2 dot 2 dash 3711A1.
Thank you. At this time, we'll go into closed session.
Number three, to discuss or consider religious exemption for, for one student as authorized
Madam Chair, I mean, Madam Clerk, do we have anyone present that would like to speak?
by Virginia Code 2 dot 2 dash 3711A2 that would involve the disclosure of information
Thank you. At this time, we will have certification of resolution for compliances.
contained in a scholastic record concerning a student. Number four, to discuss two requests for early admission that would involve the disclosure
I'm sorry, my mic was off. At this time, we will have certification of resolution of compliances.
of information contained in a scholastic record concerning students as authorized by Virginia Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion. The closed meeting was conducted in conformity with the provisions of Virginia Freedom Code 2 dot 2 dash 3711A2. of Information Act as required by section 2.2 dash 3712D of the Code of Virginia and And, number five, to discuss Lemon versus Isle of Wight County School Board as authorized by Virginia Code 2 dot 2 dash 3711A7 for purposes of consultation with legal counsel pertaining certify that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements to actual litigation where such consultation in open meeting would adversely affect the were discussed and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered. litigation posture of the school board.
And Madam Chair, I'd second that. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. At this time, we will take a vote. At this time, we will take a vote. Thank you. At this time, I would like to welcome everyone who's joining us today for our first regular board meeting for the school year of 2022-2023. Isle of Wight County is always preparing students for college, career, and life. Today, we have some special guests in our audience as well as on our podium with us. We have delegate Waxman. Would you like to stand, sir? We also have guests from Board of Supervisors, Mr. Dick Rice. Mr. Rice, would you like to stand so they can see you? Okay, Mr. Rice represents the Smithfield District. We also have former State Commissioner Steve Bowman with us this evening. We have our former Superintendent Dr. Thornton and Mrs. Thornton. And if I missed anyone that came in later, I am very sorry. And of course, we have all of the citizens of Isle of Wight County as our special guests and our staff. On the podium with us this evening, we have our special guest. She has moved up. Many of you probably recognized her last year sitting with us, but she was our junior representative last year. Kylie Shop now is our senior representative, and she attends Windsor High School. Our representative for Smithfield High School, which is junior this year, was not able to attend tonight. Kylie? Thank you very much. Now, at this time, we, just before we get, turn things over to Mr. Cunningham, I would like to say, this week, we lost one of our very special, someone that was very special to all of us. And many of you probably have heard, but Mr. Alvin Wilson, one of our former board members, passed away Tuesday evening. And of course, this afternoon, this evening around lunch, I'm sure all of you know now that Queen Elizabeth II passed away as well. So, this, during our devotions today, we would like to dedicate our moment of silence in their memory. Thank you. Mr. Cunningham.
You ready?
Yes.
Okay. Pleasure, ladies. To the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, an individual with liberty and justice for all. Moment of silence. Thank you.
At this time, we will have a special presentation with Mrs. Lynn Briggs.
Good evening, Madam Chair.
Good evening. You have your mic on.
Sometimes it's not good to be first. Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, Dr. Kramer. Tonight, I'll present to you the resolution for renaming the Career and Technical Education Building located on Smithfield High School campus. Whereas, since Dr. James D. Thornton began his tenure as Superintendent of Isle of Wight County Schools, he has made many positive contributions to the Isle of Wight County Schools Career and Technical Education Program. And whereas, under Dr. Thornton's leadership, Isle of Wight County Schools redesigned the Career and Technical Education Program to provide students with authentic, hands-on experiences in state-of-the-art facilities. And whereas, in 2019, the Career and Technical Education Building located on the campus of Smithfield High School was completely renovated under Dr. Thornton's leadership to accommodate new and expanded course offerings. And whereas, the award-winning Career and Technical Education Program continues to enhance and expand on each child's unique gifts and talents to ensure every child is college, career, and life-ready. And whereas, Dr. Thornton retired from Isle of Wight County Schools effective June 30th, 2022. And whereas, the Isle of Wight County School Board wishes to honor Dr. Thornton for his contributions to the Career and Technical Education Program, now therefore be it resolved that beginning September 9th, 2022, the Career and Technical Education Building located on the campus of Smithfield High School shall be known as Thornton Career Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Briggs. The board, you've heard what Mrs. the resolution that Mrs. Briggs presented to us this evening. What is your pleasure?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution renaming the CTE Building.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to rename the CTE Building at Smithfield High School. At this time, are there any discussions? I don't have a really discussion, but I would like to say something. I can remember when Dr. Thornton came to us, I think when I got to meet Dr. Thornton, it was the year 2015. And I, as you would meet a new superintendent, and I was board chair at that time, I mentioned to Dr. Thornton that I wanted him, one night you were, as a matter of fact, I picked him up, we drove out to the PD Prudence Building for our first meeting there. And I mentioned to him that I would like to see him do something as far as the enrollment of the students from Isle of Wight County going to the PD Prudence Program. At that time, we shared a program with the City of Suffolk. And I told him that Isle of Wight County Schools spent a lot of monies for our students to go there, but a lot of them refrained from going because they wanted to take the academic classes that were held at their high schools. And by doing, if they went to PD Prudence, they were missed out on a lot of things as well as some of the social activities in their buildings. And at that time, I had no idea that Dr. Thornton was, had the vision when he came here, he thought through things, and it was his vision to say, hey, why not put the students back on their campuses? And that's what he did. When I first heard about it, I said, wait a minute, we left the campus and put them over at PD Prudence. But I waited it out, and when I found out where he was going with it, I was amazed. Yes. And Dr. Thornton, he got the funding for that building not from where we normally go to get it, which is the Board of Supervisors, but he got it from one of the major industries here in Isle of Wight County, which happens to have been Smithfield Foods. And we are proud of him for doing that. And Smithfield Foods, if you know anything about them, they have always, they have left their legacy, as well as Luter's family, all over Isle of Wight County, and especially in the Smithfield, the town of Smithfield. Smithfield High School is located on the outskirts, very close to the town of Smithfield, Turner Drive. And we are thankful for Dr. Thornton for doing that. I am proud of the CTE program that we have in Isle of Wight County. Many other school districts have come over to visit our CTE program, not just the Smithfield High School, the whole CTE program. And he spread it out, Smithfield High School, Windsor High, as well as the campus of Windsor Elementary School. If you're not, if you have not been out to visit the farm, please make an appointment and do that. Again, like I said, I am so honored to be a citizen of Isle of Wight County. When people come here to visit what we have to offer our students in Isle of Wight County Schools. Dr. Thornton, from me, thank you very much as a citizen of Isle of Wight County. Thank you. At this time, at this time, if there are no more discussions from the other board members, then we will take a vote. Okay, the vote is three yes, one nay. Motion passes. Thank you.
If it's okay, at this time, we'd like to invite Dr. Thornton and his wife, Mary, up. We have two signs. One represents the plaque that will go on the outside of the building, and the other shows the lettering. And we would like to get a picture of the Thorntons up here with the board in the background. If there are no objections.
Okay. If you want to, we can go down and take the picture. Okay. Next on the agenda, we have the Capital Improvement Plan, public input. Okay. Again, the next on the agenda, we have item number 11, Capital Improvement Plan, public input.
Madam Chair, School Board members, Dr. Kramer. Madam Chair, if I could address the board concerning the current CIP. Would it be possible, Madam Chair?
Yes, you may. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I would like to give you an update on the current status as approaching the CIP, trying to do research and ensure that we're meeting the needs of the, of the population in here, in Isle of Wight. If you can just bear with me while I go through this. Now, the 2022 U.S. Construction Calls Trends for July 2022 Costs Index forecast a 14.1% year-over-year increase in construction calls by the year end 2022. As labor, material, and costs continue to rise, now escalation should stabilize to the 2%, the 4% range in 2023 and 2024, on par with historical averages. Now, overall, cost inflation for materials is expected to begin lowering by the end of 2022. So at this time, we're still in the midst in a steep start lowering based off of the U.S. Construction Costs Trends. And largely return to typical levels by the mid 2023s. Now, however, given the large number of construction inputs that goes into this category, many of which are often subject to international risks and tariffs such as sanctions, costs for some materials may remain volatile. Now, all items on the CIP has been affected. Now, in order to capture all the inflationary changes that have occurred over the past fiscal year, we need to ensure that all items on the CIP has cost adjustments associated to them. To inform you, the current CIP that was posted for public input tonight lacked those adjustments and the priority list that will be proposed. In order to ensure the community has the most updated information to make decisions on, I request the board doesn't take action, but utilize 16.6, the CIP area, for informational only. If this is granted, we will be, we will start, we will incorporate community meetings concerning the CIP for the school division to elicit more ideas concerning community and school needs. The process that we will follow would be the following, and these are some potential dates. Monday, 6:00 PM, October 3rd, 2022, there'll be a community meeting for the CIP. This will be held at West Side Elementary School. Tuesday, at 6:00 PM, October 4th, 2022, there'll be a community meeting for the CIP at Windsor High School. If people are unable to attend, they can provide their feedback through the Contact Us link on the webpage, going to the Capital Improvement Plan button on that page. Thursday, 6:00 PM, October 13th, 2022, School Board Meeting at West Side. Now, this will be for the first presentation of all the information gathered from those other meetings and put into a presentation style to present to the school board for public input. Moving from there, Thursday at 6:00 PM, November 10th, 2022, School Board Meeting will be at West Side Elementary School. This will be the second presentation for all of the public input, and this will be for the CIP approval. December 2022, the CIP will turn, will be turned into the Board of Supervisors for funding options. So, Madam Chair, members of the school board, if allotted, if we can just maneuver that to be informational, and then this process will be implemented as proposed. So I just want to throw that, I want to make sure that you know that before we start the session.
Chair, Tynes, may I add to that?
Yes, Dr. Kramer.
So, as Dr. Coleman stated, we need to make adjustments to the information in the CIP. We will also have multiple opportunities, as he stated, for citizens to provide input, either in person or online. We will also have public input at board meetings prior to approval. I realize we have people who came out tonight to speak on the CIP, and we're keeping that on the agenda if you still wish to make remarks tonight. However, in light of the change, we understand that some people may wish to hold their comments until an adjusted CIP is available. Whether tonight or at a later date, we really do appreciate hearing from you with your thoughts and concerns about the CIP. And as Dr. Coleman stated, when the dates are official, we'll certainly have those dates posted and advertised to the community.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Kramer. Okay. At this time, I would like to open up the public speaking. At this time, if we have any speakers on the CIP, I would like to open up to the public.
In accordance to policy BDDH-dash-E, presentation of information on any subject will be concluded at the discretion of the board. No person will be recognized to speak more than once. Citizens scheduled on the agenda to speak will be permitted four minutes maximum time for their presentation. Delegations will be requested to limit their speakers to two. Persons speaking are asked to be specific, state the issues for the board's consideration, and attach a copy of your prepared remarks. If you have prepared remarks, they should be given to the board clerk. Please do not approach the board members. Any matter relating to specific students will be heard by the school board only in a closed meeting.
Okay. Do we have?
Yes.
Any, well, hold up. I think you, Mrs. Whitlow, I think you jumped a little ahead of me, okay? Right now, I want to ask the people to come forward with Capital Improvement Plan remarks only. That's on the agenda, true.
This is the sign-in sheet for that.
For the Capital Improvement?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
All right, first, we have Heidi Schwartz.
If you choose to wait and you have signed up, you do not have to come up tonight. You can just opt to do it at those dates that Mr. Coleman gave you and wait till the updated version of the CIP.
So I guess I'm confused. So am I only speaking on CIP because I signed up?
Well, see, this, it was.
So am I speaking on all my agenda items?
This is just the CIP. Go ahead.
Mrs. Schwartz, if you choose not to speak on the CIP tonight and wait until we have the special public hearings, that's fine. But you, if you choose to do it tonight, yes, but you will be speaking on the CIP as well as, as well as any other agenda items you choose to speak on. But you will only have four minutes to do all of it.
Okay, so this is my time to?
To speak, yes.
On the agenda items?
On all the agenda items.
Okay, it sounded like it was just capital improvement items.
Well, well, hold up, hold up. We have opened the floor for capital improvement items. Mrs. Schwartz, if you would like to speak on the capital improvement items at this time, just capital improvement, please do that. As soon as we get everyone that wants to speak only on the December 2022, the CIP will turn, will be turned into the Board of Supervisors for funding options. So Madam Chair, members of the School Board, if allotted, if we can just maneuver that to be informational, and then this process will be implemented as proposed. So I just want to throw that, I want to make sure that you know that before we start the session.
Chair, may I add to that?
Yes, Dr. Kramer.
So as Dr. Coleman stated, we need to make adjustments to the information in the CIP. We will also have multiple opportunities, as he stated, for citizens to provide input, either in-person or online. We will also have public input at board meetings prior to approval. I realize we have people who came out tonight to speak on the CIP, and we're keeping that on the agenda if you still wish to make remarks tonight. However, in light of the change, we understand that some people may wish to hold their comments until an adjusted CIP is available. Whether tonight or at a later date, we really do appreciate hearing from you with your thoughts and concerns about the CIP. And as Dr. Coleman stated, when the dates are official, we'll certainly have those dates posted and advertised to the community.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Kramer. Okay. At this time, I would like to open up the public speaking. At this time, if we have any speakers on the CIP, I would like to open up to the public.
In accordance to Policy BDDH-E, presentation of information on any subject will be concluded at the discretion of the Board. No person will be recognized to speak more than once. Citizens scheduled on the agenda to speak will be permitted four minutes maximum time for their presentation. Delegations will be requested to limit their speakers to two. Persons speaking are asked to be specific. State the issues for the Board's consideration and attach a copy of your prepared remarks. If you have prepared remarks, they should be given to the Board Clerk. Please do not approach the Board Members. Any matter relating to specific students will be heard by the School Board only in a closed meeting.
Okay. Do we have?
Yes.
Any, well, hold up. I think you, Mrs. Whitlow, I think you jumped a little ahead of me, okay? Right now, I want to ask the people to come forward with Capital Improvement Plan remarks only. That's on the agenda, true.
This is the sign-in sheet for that.
For the Capital Improvement?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
All right, first, we have Heidi Schwartz.
If you choose to wait and you have signed up, you do not have to come up tonight. You can just opt to do it at those dates that Mr. Coleman gave you and wait to the updated version of the CIP.
So I guess I'm confused. So am I only speaking on CIP because I signed up?
Well, see, this was.
So am I speaking on all my agenda items?
This is just the CIP. Go ahead.
Mrs. Schwartz, if you choose not to speak on the CIP tonight and wait until we have the special public hearings, that's fine. But you, if you choose to do it tonight, yes, but you will be speaking on the CIP as well of, as well as any other agenda items you choose to speak on. But you will only have four minutes to do all of it.
Okay, so this is my time to?
To speak, yes.
On the agenda items?
On all the agenda items.
It sounded like it was just capital improvement items.
Well, um, well, hold up, hold up. We have opened the floor for capital improvement items. Mrs. Schwartz, if you would like to speak on the capital improvement items at this time, just capital improvement, please do that. As soon as we get everyone that wants to speak only on the capital improvement items, we will open up again to speak on any other agenda items other than capital improvement.
Madam Chair, Mrs. Schwartz has signed up to speak on capital improvement?
Yes, and that's what we're open up for.
And as well as the other two areas.
So what I'm saying is I would come up three times.
Okay.
So she'll come back up two other times?
You will come back up, come back up once we open the next agenda item up for regular public, for the regular, regular public speaking of agenda items, Mrs. Schwartz, okay? Right now, just capital improvement.
Got it, okay. So, capital improvement, all I was going to say is safety for our students should come first before anything else, and it didn't appear that way. I'd like to see it reworked and make safety first. That's it on my capital improvement.
Thank you, Mrs. Schwartz. Next?
We have Reverend Williams.
I'm not sure if I should wait till later or speak now, but it's on my heart now to speak, so I'm going to do just that. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Alawak County School Board. We greet also all of the school's leaders and community stakeholders. I challenge everyone addressed to use our Capital Improvement Plan as an opportunity to showcase unto the world what community leadership ought to look like. Some of, some of you may remember the movies Sister Act 1 and 2, and how Woody used a community choir to change the social system of an entire community. She used the choir as the vehicle to change the community. In management, we call this transformational leadership. I'm asking all of you to become transformational leaders by using our CIP as a vehicle for change. Whether we admit it or not, Alawak County and other towns, cities, and counties need some deep spiritual soul healing. We need to approach our educational visions and goals in a more inclusive way. To do this, we must first bring healing to the wounds caused by divisiveness. For as long as I can remember, this county has always had some members who would use symbols or whatever means possible to keep us divided. And I am afraid that our CIP, Capital Improvement Plan, has always supported and promoted the symbols of divisiveness through the use of a dual school system. It is not economically nor spiritually good nor feasible to have two high schools for just a handful of students. The only thing such a dual system can do is make bitter rivalry between the northern end of the county and the southern end. And we, the taxpayer, end up having to pay the cost for such bitter spiritual end. The removal of promoted symbols from our CIP will bring spiritual healing to our community. We can become a beacon light, a world-class school board?
One minute.
And community, which other communities who may be blind to such supportive divisiveness can use as a benchmark for transformational leadership through the use of CIP. I am calling on our School Board and all, all stakeholders to search our CIP that we may ensure ourselves that we are not unknowingly supporting symbols of any type that might possibly be promoting divisiveness. When we have done this, you will see that our county will begin to work together for the greater good, more inclusiveness, and spiritual healthiness. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Okay, next?
Next, we have Mr. Glenn Little.
Madam Chair, Board Members, thank you for this opportunity this evening to speak on the Capital Improvement Plan. I'm going to lay a little bit of background and share my concerns on that based on a couple recent events that, as a taxpayer, really bother me. Because to me, based on what went on with the outgoing superintendent's severance package, was not showing good stewardships of my tax dollars or transparency of the Board's actions when, thank you to the Windsor Weekly.
Excuse me, Mr. Little, I don't want to, I have to interrupt you because you need to stick with the CIP plan.
I'm laying the background for my concerns to the CIP, as I stated in my opening statement, Madam.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm sorry, you can go on, thank you.
Thank you. All right. So, and then only through reporters and Freedom of Information Act does it come out what really went on, okay, with the expenditure of our tax dollars. Okay? And then as we find out, when we hired the new superintendent, a good salary, which to get the right expertise you need nowadays, but I was quite taken aback with the perks package. And wow, I don't, there again, I don't call it good utilization of our taxpayer dollars or good stewardship of my taxpayer dollars. Okay? So with the Capital Improvement Plan, with the amount of dollars that are at stake there, okay, it concerns me that there will be some real concern for good stewardship and good utilization of our taxpayer dollars and transparency so that we don't have to find out after the fact what went on in a closed-door meeting or through the newspaper or Freedom of Information Act, and also that we don't then run into some huge cost overruns and contract problems as we've seen in recent history with some of the other large construction projects that went on in the school system in the county, okay? Which was not a good utilization of our taxpayer dollars for the benefit and improvement of the education system for the students and our futures. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
All right, next, we have Mr. Mark Booster.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, Dr. Kramer. First, I want to state that I'm glad that the CIP is currently in review. It does pretty much change everything I had to speak about tonight. There's a few things I want to touch on, though. The main thing I was going to discuss was the 2.4, 2.4 rounded million dollars proposed for the artificial turf of Smithfield High School. After listening to previous Board Members, you made several statements as far as the bus garage being rundown and in need of repair. Any money of that amount would be generously used to retrofit the bus garage, provide an improved, safer working environment, which is conducive to a more proficient operation. Now, I don't know if the AstroTurf or artificial turf is going to remain in place on the new proposal, but I just want to point out some things. It was published in the Smithfield Times, Division-Wide Alawak County Schools. They've seen a drastic decline in SOL testing results from 2018, 2019. Reading has a 73% pass rate, which is down from 80%. Math is a 61% passing rate, which is down from 83%. And science is a 67% passing rate, down from 83%. To put it in perspective, reading has a 27% failure rate, math a 39% failure rate, and science has a 33% failure rate. Now, we can all pretty much agree this is a direct result of the COVID pandemic and lack of in-person instruction. But my question is, what are we going to do to get these students caught up? Instead of requesting funding in that amount for artificial turf, I would recommend requesting funding for special programs which could possibly benefit these students and improve their SOL proficiency. Now, with that being said, I just want to point out a few articles I do have on the AstroTurf, should it remain on the CIP. In 2019, a study by Cleveland-based university hospitals featured data from 26 high school trainers during the 2017-2018 athletic season who reported 953 injuries. 368 were on natural grass while 585 were on synthetic turf. The study also found that upper and lower extremities as well as torso injuries occurred more on synthetic turf than natural grass. The sports most vulnerable to the injuries were football, men's lacrosse, rugby, and girls' and boys' soccer led the way. Also in 2008, an article by the Hospital for Special Surgery, which is ranked the number one orthopedic hospital in the United States.
One minute.
Their article states, "The coefficient of friction," which relates to how sticky or grabby the surface is and how much force it will take for a planted foot to slip. For surfaces with high coefficients of friction, such as artificial turf, this requires a large amount of force. In these surfaces in which players place their foot, it gets caught in the turf. Studies have shown an increase in the incidence of ACL injuries with surfaces with a higher coefficient of friction. So based on everything I presented, if it does come back in the CIP for the same amount, I do oppose that spending because I do believe there are other more important and pressing issues it could be spent for. I want to thank you for your time and have a good evening.
Thank you.
I'm going to follow the order as, as the citizen signed up. So next is going to be Ms. Tiffany Walker.
Good evening. My name is Tiffany Walker, and I am here as a parent of a Smithville High School band student, and I am a band booster member as well for Smithville High School. I'd like to start by saying that our new principal, Mrs. Coffey, has been an amazing support for the band program, and we appreciate all that she has done to help keep this program running. We also appreciate everything that Mrs. Hatton, the band director for Smithville Middle School, has done to help us with band camp and our field show. With that being said, they cannot do this alone. We need you, the Board, and you, our new superintendent, to approve funding for this program now, not in 2026. This is the funding that we were promised back in 2020. Where has that money gone? Our students are using damaged instruments, harnesses that are not made to be used with the drums that we currently have, drumsticks that are taped together because they've been broken from so many students using them over the years. The padding for the drums are shredded, falling apart, and being held together by rubber bands, and in some cases, being duct taped together just so the metal won't cut into our students' shoulders and stomachs. Our band room does not have consistently working air conditioning. It only works a few hours a day, a few days a week. And we have lights in the classroom that have been out for some time with no signs of being fixed. We also have doors inside the room that were never replaced, and a temporary lock was put there instead. There are paper trails for all of these items mentioned that we have submitted for months and some for years. These students represent our county schools. They play in our town at festivals and farmers markets. They played at convocation for the teachers, Board, and Superintendent, freshman orientation, football games, graduations, and many more events. They have done this all for the last seven months with no director. They have done the work on their own time. They showed up this summer when we were finally given approval to use the school building for practice and band camp, and they've been amazing with what little resources they have. Our students had a long-term sub last year that was nothing more than a monitor. She had no curriculum, and our senior band students taught the younger students. They should not have had that burden. We are now in the same situation again already this year. Students shouldn't be writing lesson plans and teaching other students, especially when the school is paying for a substitute. Our new substitute is appreciated, however, she is not qualified to teach band.
Excuse me, Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
We would rather you stick directly to the CIP plan. That's what we're discussing right now. Some of your things you're going into is about, they're instructional, and if you want to voice your opinion on the instructional things, we have another period for that.
Sure. I'll just finish up with, please take a look at this plan and make the adjustments so that our band students get the funding they were approved for over two years ago so that this program can get back on track. If you push this vote off until December now, we will waste more time for our current band students. Almost a full year of requests and needs will go by. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, if we have others that are planning to come forward, please restrict your remarks to the CIP plan, the items that were only on the CIP plan. If you want to make further input and remarks about instructional things, we have another period on our agenda for that. Thank you very much.
All right, next, we have Mr. Charles Sheeler.
Board Members, thank you for letting me speak tonight. I tune with the band boosters, and I'm a fan parent. My daughter is a senior at Smithfield High School. She is the drum major. And my concern with the CIP?
Yes.
Is that, yes, in approximately 2000, I'm sorry, in November of 2019, there was approval for improvements to the band room that were approved by the county as well as the School Board, okay? Plans were drawn up and submitted to the School Board and to the superintendent for those improvements. And I guess I have two questions. One, where did that funding go? If it was already approved, it was actually published in the local paper as having been approved, where did the funding go? And two, why are we waiting to 2027 to make improvements to a space that, as Ms. Walker pointed out, does not have current working air conditioning? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Greg Varner?
Hello, Madam Chair, and Dr. Kramer and the rest of the School Board. Appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak. I would like to request to be added to the instructional time because I, a lot of my remarks, I guess I had to do both of them, if I may.
Thank you.
Regarding the Capital Improvement Plan, I have a very large, a huge concern for the band facilities and as well as the choir room facilities. These were scheduled to be renovated in 2020, the summer of 2020, and of course, you realize, you probably remember, this is COVID time, and so everybody was, nobody was anywhere to be found. And, and then when we came back, I kept thinking, I kept asking, are we going to now finish the renovation? And it's fallen on deaf ears. Nobody has brought it back up. And then when I saw the current CIP, and I understand that it's going to be up for review, and that's why I'm requesting that you reconsider and have put in, back in, and do the capital improvements for the renovation of the band and choir facilities. The air conditioning that has been spoken about has been a huge annoyance and a huge burden for the kids who meet in there daily and very. and very, it's very hot most of the time. And I have, I can say from personal experience, being in there and helping, that we would consistently ask the assistant principal to make work orders. He assured me they were, and he showed me on paper how they were made. And we, I came in one day and the air conditioning was great. The next day, it was off again, and it didn't work. And I was told they were waiting for a part. And so, that, in addition to the space that is, that the students have, is not conducive for what they are trying to do. There are instruments in the percussion section that takes up most of the room, and there's no place to put those in a way that, it just makes the room look trashy all the time. We have the limited space that we do have. The renovation, from what I understand, was going to improve that tremendously with the choir and band. So, that is my request that you reconsider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Varner. Next, we have Ms. Emily Rupert.
I'll leave to comment on the instruction.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next, we have Chris Bosher. I'm so sorry.
Bosher.
Okay.
Will you spill your last name for me, please? I just want to write it down.
Oh, of course. Madam Chair, School Board, thanks for letting me speak. My name is Chris Bosher. Last name is B-O-S-C-H-E-R-T.
Thank you, Mr. Bosher.
I'm new to the town of Smithfield, just relocated from South Carolina, and I'm active-duty military, like many of the residents here. And my family, we chose this town largely due to the holistic approach that we kind of saw in the school system with the number of programs that are available, like the Career Center that you talked about earlier. One of those important programs for us was band, and I'm just here to, tonight, as a band parent, just asking to reconsider the priority of the funds in the CIP for the band program. I think that the musics in this community, the music programs, excuse me, are at a turning point. Being new to the town, everyone knows that Smithfield High School has a great band, but not everyone in the town knows that they're going through some real adversity. I think you've heard a lot about it already from some of the other parents, but if the county values Smithfield's music programs, you'll take some action soon because I think that this is a critical moment for those programs. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you.
Okay, last we have Jasmine and Tristan. And if, before you leave, if you could just jot your address down for me and just hand it to me at some point, just so that we can, you know, send a letter.
Okay.
Are you students from--
Smithfield.
Smithfield High School, okay.
Good afternoon, members of the board. I'm Tristan Walker.
And my name is Jasmine Johnson.
And we are student leaders of the Smithfield High School Packer Band. And all that we ask from all of you is to please fund the band. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay.
That's it, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. At this time, if we, do we have any more speakers on the CIP plan at this time? All right, hearing on, this portion of the meeting is closed for CIP. At this time, we will move on to requests to speak on agenda items other than CIP plan, because we just did that. So, if there is an agenda item tonight that you would like to speak on other than the CIP plan, this is your opportunity.
All right. In accordance to policy BDDH-E, presentation of information on any subject will be concluded at the discretion of the board. No person will be recognized to speak more than once. Citizens scheduled on the agenda to speak will be permitted four minutes maximum time for their presentation. Delegations will be requested to limit their speakers to two. Persons speaking are asked to be specific, state the issues for the board's consideration, and attach a copy of your prepared remarks. If you have prepared remarks, they should be given to the board clerk. Please do not approach the board members. Any matter relating to specific students will be heard by the school board only in a closed meeting. And first, we have Ms. Heidi Schwartz.
Mrs. Schwartz, before you speak, your time won't start yet, okay? I just want to make sure. We are going to have another public session to speak. This particular portion of our meeting, the one we just had, was a special portion to speak on CIP plan only. This is one we normally have on our agenda, to speak on any agenda item that we have tonight on the agenda. Later in the meeting, we will have another public meeting, speaking session where you can speak on anything in Alawak County schools, whether it's on the agenda or not, okay? Thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay, we start, Mrs. Schwartz, now.
Okay. So, I had CTE renaming on mine, but that's passed, but I was going to say, don't do it. I'll move on to the Hampton Curriculum, which is on the agenda for, it's within the budget items. I saw that it was repurchased again for $60,000. I was wondering why, because it seemed like it was a bad initial purchase. I had no idea that it was an annual renewal purchase. Did you know this, Ms. Tines, last year when it was sold to the board members a year ago and it was approved? On the agenda is the JHCD for deletion tonight. I'm just wondering if we're stripping away more parental guidance and knowledge when we're taking away the parental rights for signing for medication. It seems also that it conflicts with the second read and adoption of the JHCE. In the JHCE, it states, "With the written consent of students' parents to seek an eval for medical practitioner for psychotrophic medication." But then you don't need parents' actual signature to administer drugs. So, I'm wondering why we need permission to seek for the drug, but we're not going to have signatures for the drugs moving forward. People are going to think that it's great that the doc doesn't have to send it over when Sally gets an ear infection for her antibiotics moving forward. But when Sally's in high school, and Sally now is encouraged to have her pronoun now to be a he, and mom and dad aren't aware of being told that the school is now calling Sally, say, Dick, she can now have hormones even prescribed to her by her physician without the parent's knowledge, and the school can administer this without the parent's signatures. Hormones, then what are we going to do, you know, three, five, 10 years from now when we're dealing with the psychological issues because Sally was just a tomboy? So, I'd like to know why we're not going to have parent signatures on prescriptions that are going to be given at the school level. On the school board budget, there's been no mention of our previous chief financial officer resignation on May 9th. This took place after he was told by Dr. Thornton that his contract would not be renewed after June 30th, and it would look better if he just resigned. Was this board told this? Were you told that he should just resign by Dr. Thornton? Were you told that Mr. Kempson wanted to be resigned? He didn't want to be resigned. I've had a discussion with him. He didn't quit, and if Dr. Thornton told you that he simply resigned, he lied to you.
Excuse me, Mrs. Schwartz. That's not on the agenda for tonight.
Oh, it's in the budget. It's on the school budget, because I'm coming back to that. Makes you wonder why Ms. Trolinger came back as the chief financial officer--
One minute.
--and it's not been announced. She finalized the $91,000. And if I run over time, I'll do this more at the end. So, going back to the school budget, because all of this is on the budget, who's handling the budget? Who's been handling the transition of the budget? Because Mr. Kemp met with Dr. Coleman before he was forced to resign, but Mr. Coleman is evidently, doesn't have to fill out, you know, what am I trying to get back to? Because now you interrupted me. I hate when you do that. This brings me back, I guess I'll just finish this up because now I'm, like, every time you interrupt me, I lose my train of thought. So, what I want to know is why Ms. Trolinger has not been presenting to the board of supervisors or to the school board at the meetings all summer long in regards to our budget.
Time.
Yeah. There's a lot of questions that need to be answered with our chief financial officer. So, I'll finish up at my next time.
Okay, next we have Mr. Herb DeGraff.
A copy of my remarks went to y'all in an email earlier tonight.
Yes, sir.
I'm Herb DeGraff, Madam Chair. Dr. Kramer, welcome to Alawak County. I live in the Smithfield area, but I'm in the Carsville zone. A little bit after the fact, but the scuttlebutt name on the street is totally unflattering for what you've done in naming the CTE facility after Dr. Thornton, because from day one, as the IWCAS superintendent, he created an adverse work environment, and in seven years, got rid of beaucoup of staff that was left in the school system. And did this help IWCAS's academic ranking to go from 16th in 2015 among school divisions in Virginia to 44th in 2019? Dr. Thornton really wasn't deserving of having the CTE building named after him for multiple reasons, literally 27 of them that were in that email, essentially. And I'll go over some of them here. Has a history of violating his contract, oath, policies, regulations, and laws, taking discriminatory actions against African-American students and staff, in my opinion. In my opinion, filing false information in documents to include the Standards of Quality Compliance Report and the IWCAS Facility Capacity Report. Multiple absence from the school board meetings as set forth in his contract. Failed to provide an IWCAS curriculum aligned with the Virginia standards of learning for our teachers to teach in accordance with Virginia school law and policies for all seven years. Denied CE teachers their lawful right to have an unencumbered planning period. What don't we understand about the word "unencumbered", people? Hiring individuals who did not meet the minimum requirements of the job postings. Denied African-Americans principal positions and a directorships that were qualified for the positions unlike the other folks who were white that got hired or promoted into these positions, and this even caused the Alawak NAACP chapter some concern. Jeopardizing the safety of students and staff by defying the state marshal's orders by installing night locks on all the school doors. Failed to provide school resource officers in all the schools when there's plenty of money to do so. Complete mishandling of the student lunched up to the point that private citizens and businesses had to assist with the financial issues. Created an atmosphere of mistrust for the board of supervisors to the point that they've held back $1.5 million initially from next year's budget. Deleting of FOIA-protected records. Signing his name on contracts where the school board chair should have signed, and he's not a school board member. Wasteful spending of taxpayer money, and believe me, in my opinion, as a former IWCAS board member for 13 years, I know how money can be wasted in a school division. Dr. Thornton didn't comply with the Smithfield Foods and their wishes to construct--
One minute.
--a multi-purpose pavilion with the $3 million that they gave the IWCAS board, and he spent $95,000 to send himself and other administrators to resorts. Look, the list is almost endless, but remember, a person to have a building named after them has to have had their actions be beyond reproach. Dr. Thornton's actions noted do not. The coup de grace was the transition appropriation golden parachute that Dr. Thornton sandbagged, a Marine Corps term, the school board, and gave him $87,000 more than he should have gotten per policy GCBD. It's a real slap in the face of every Alawak taxpayer. And the honorables Henry Bradby, Georgie D. Tyler, and Joel Bradshaw, what would they think and say if they were still alive when the school board names the CTE building after somebody who didn't deserve it? Board majority, you've engaged in a pirate victory. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Next, we have Mr. Louis Edmonds.
Good evening. Louis Edmonds, Windsor. I'd like to first start off with passing my condolences to Mr. Wilson's family and also to Mrs. Couch's family with the untimely passing of her father, Mr. Tommy Darden, who was truly an icon of the Alawak community. Last month, during the first read of the SRO Memorandum of Understanding, I believe Mrs. Tines and Mr. Colick brought up some concerns in the language of the MOU regarding a principal or a school administrator being able to step in for a parent or guardian if a law enforcement officer needed to question a student about a, quote, "urgent matter." I share their concern. I didn't see any changes in that MOU, so I hope that that's brought up and discussed tonight. The term urgent is too vague. I hope that this scenario can better be defined. My mind goes to something along the lines of immediate threat of life or serious bodily harm, such as loss of limb or vision, something to that effect. The second item I want to bring up is, tonight during the consent agenda, you will be asked to vote on approving last month's meeting minutes. The summary of Mrs. Tines's comments at the end of the board meeting are incomplete. At least in my case, Mrs. Tines, your account of the closed-meeting interviews for the school board appointment was a disgusting lie. Saying that Mr. Vines was the only person to bring up the children was slanderous against me, potentially slanderous against the citizens who stepped forward to interview, and also towards Mrs. Carr, who did not vote to put Mr. Vines on this board. However, that's politics. I understand why you would use Mr. Vines's interview to defend yours and Mrs. Dial's vote to put him on the board because he's done nothing since that you can defend. After your comments, I reached out to the FOIA council to see if I had the right to see the notes and documents that this board, that those board members created during my interview. They said I did, and I asked for them. I also verified with the Laboratory of Virginia to ensure that those notes would have been considered public records. They are public records, required to be retained for three years. So, you can imagine my disappointment when Mrs. Briggs informed me the records, quote, "no longer exist." Therefore, this board has yet again broken the law. You've either failed to follow Virginia Public Records Act in retaining the documents, or you've intentionally and prematurely destroyed the records, which is a violation of FOIA. To save me the time and you the embarrassment and potential mandatory donation to the Virginia Literary Fund, again, I suggest we don't go to court over this. I ask that this board undergo additional public records training, or Public Records Act training and FOIA training. I know that's a requirement for all of you when you come to the board, but something similar to what you did after the 2000, the 2020 and 2021 lawsuit that you lost, something along those lines--
One minute.
--a public training, I think, would be appropriate. Also, a way that we can avoid this in the future is I recommend you not exercise your legal FOIA exemption to conduct future appointment interviews in a closed session. You're welcome to do them in an open session. I highly recommend you do that, and then we don't have these problems in the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, last we have Mrs. Tracy Ruet.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board, Dr. Kramer. My name is Tracy Ruet, and I'm from the Carsville District. As the board knows, and many community members are aware, though I'm sure, though it seems some have forgotten, it is due to Dr. Thornton's vision, the division's career program has grown so much more than what we had before he arrived. I want to highlight some contributions which were put into place under Dr. Thornton's watch. Separating from the Prudence Center, which allowed more Alawak County students to participate in the program, and reallocated over $700,000 per year. The division-- The Division also received a $3 million donation from Smithfield Foods towards the CTE program. We now have a partnership with Liebherr, who has donated tens of thousands of dollars worth of welding equipment to the welding program. We also have received $25,000 in a donation from Ferguson Corporation, who we are now a partner with. Students, as well as the community members, have benefited from the renovations done by our Building Trades Program, such as the Hobbs House. The Division has an affiliation agreement for our nursing program for students who wish to enter the medical field. We have now the Little Sprouts Program, which not only aids the community, but also our students who wish to go into the education field. And this brings me to the Land Lab, which brings experience to students looking into this field of work. It also provides students, elementary students, with field trip opportunities within the Division. This list by no means covers all of the accomplishments the Division has and will continue to benefit from as a result of Dr. Thornton's term with us in Allaway County. But just the few items I have listed, in my opinion, show the community has received more bang for its buck during Dr. Thornton's tenure and only confirms the board made a good decision on renaming the building the Thornton Career Center. Board protocols state that board members are to support board decisions. And I can say, as a Carsville resident, I am disappointed this did not happen during the photo shoot. And then the last thing I want to say is that people in glass houses shouldn't throw stones when it comes to discriminatory actions. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it, Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you to everyone that came out tonight to speak on agenda items. At this time, I would like to recognize Supervisor, Board Chair, Mr. Jefferson. He came in a little late, but thank you, Mr. Jefferson. We had already started. Thank you very much for coming out tonight to join us. All right. The next item on the agenda is Board Members' Committee Reports and Information. Do we have any committee reports?
I don't have any committee reports.
Okay. All right. I really don't have committee reports, but I did participate in some webinars, and I shared that information with other board members. And this week, of course, you know, we had the opening of schools in Allaway County, and board members, some of them, we all were invited to show up at the schools, along with Superintendent and his staff. And we really enjoyed first day of school with some of the students, myself. I was at Smithfield High School and here at Westside. Mr. Cunningham was Smithfield High School and Hardy. And Mr. Colick, I think he did all of the schools on his end of the, that was Windsor High, Georgia Tyler, Windsor Elementary, and Carsville. And I would like to thank all of them, Mr. Vines and Mrs. Dowell. As you know, they were working at the time during the hours of the schools, and this is why they were not able to join us in visiting the schools. But they visit the schools during the summer. Thank you very much. Also, while this week was one of excitement and joy, our schools welcome students back to a new year. It is truly a sad one for our community. On Tuesday evening, September 6th, Mr. Alvin Wilson, who served as the Hardy representative on the Allaway County School Board from 2015 to October 2021, passed away. Mr. Wilson was a lifelong advocate for public education and for making decisions in the best interests of children. We appreciate his years of service to the students, families, and the citizens of Allaway County. To the Wilson family, the Allaway County Schools sends their heartfelt condolences at this time.
Madam Chair, if I may, I would also like to add that we would like to acknowledge the passing of the parent of one of our principals. Mr. Tommy Darden passed away on Monday, September 5th, a lifelong resident of the county. He and his family were proud farmers and shared their love of farming and farm life with people across the world. His daughter, Ellen Couch, serves as principal of Windsor Elementary. We extend our deepest sympathy to the family and friends of Mr. Tommy Darden and Mr. Alvin Wilson, two giants of the community who left a tremendous legacy and who both will be deeply missed. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. At this time, I will open it up to the other board members, if they would like to say anything about Mr. Wilson or Mr. Darden.
Well, I wanted to say something about Mr. Wilson. I met Mr. Alvin Wilson back in 1998 when I moved here to Smithfield. He actually was my barber. And a lot of you who know Mr. Wilson know he had a barber shop. But I went to the original one, I guess it was the original one down where the, what is that? Down by the wharf, where the wharf is now. You know, I will miss him. He was a trustee at my church, Emmanuel Baptist Church here in Smithfield. It's on the outskirts of Smithfield. He was an active trustee, very, very nice man, very nice man. He was a true Christian. I mean, he was there, before he got sick, he was there at church almost every Sunday. I mean, if he had something else he had to do, he wasn't there, but when I'd see him, he said, "Oh, I miss you," or whatever. But such a good man, such a good man. I remember beginning of every year, he would say something to motivate the families and the students of the members at Emmanuel Baptist Church. And at the end of the school year, he would always congratulate the students who graduated and some who were moving on to college. He'd say positive things to them. And, I mean, he would definitely be missed. He was a positive influence on this community and definitely a positive influence on me. And I wouldn't be on the board now if it wasn't for him, because people came to me and said, "Hey, Mr. Wilson, he's ready to step down. Would you like to do the job?" And I, I mean, how could I turn it down? People came to me. But this is about Mr. Wilson. He will be missed, definitely will be missed. And my prayers are going to the Wilson family. I just pray that they have strength when they're going through this time, and I would definitely be at his funeral whenever, I mean, whenever it is. I'm going to make sure I'm there. And I know the board members who know Mr. Wilson or knew him truly will miss him. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak one?
Being a native of Allaway County, when I saw Mr. Wilson again, he was very instrumental in my life. He was there when I was receiving my license in ministry, and I moved away and came back home, and he encouraged me. And he would always say, "I've known you all your life. You can't say you know me all your life." Because he was older. And I would laugh every time he'd say that, oftentimes going to his barber shop. But when I became a board member, he encouraged me, and he told me to stand and remember the children.
Okay. Mr. Colick?
Well, I actually didn't know either one of these fine gentlemen. I've heard a lot about them when we first moved to Allaway, being a transplant myself. But I'm just going to keep them in my prayers. And Mr. Darden, I know, you know, I know his daughter like all of you do, and to see the caliber person she is, I can just imagine what type of man he was. But I'm keeping both families in my prayers, and thank you.
Okay. And on a personal note with Mr. Wilson, as Mr. Colick said, I did not know Mr. Darden that well. I've had the opportunity to meet Ellen and work with Ellen since she became principal here in our county. And again, like Mr. Colick said, she is a very, she's an excellent school administrator. But as far as Mr. Wilson, a lot of things, you know, people don't know about certain people. Mr. Wilson directed me into my first teaching position, which was in Charles City County. He saw me one day, and it was, I think it was like June or July. Most of the time, most teachers have signed a contract or they know they're going to get a contract. And my first major in college when I graduated was SPED. They did not have, during that time in the 1980, a lot of school districts really did not have a whole lot of classes, SPED classes at that time, maybe one or two. So I saw him one day, very quickly, I'm going to get through this, and he said, "Do you have a job yet?" I said, "No." He said, "You know, because we didn't have any SPED teachers to leave this year in Surrey." But he said, "I was talking to one of the principals in Charles City the other day. They needed one. Here's his number. Call him." I called the gentleman. They had me to come in the next day, interviewed me. He called me the third day and said, well, this was three days now, and said, "You have a job if you want it." So my first three years of teaching was on behalf of Mr. Alvin Wilson, because without him, I never would have known about that position. Also, Mr. Wilson, some of the things that you may not know about Mr. Wilson, Mr. Wilson was an educator here in Allaway County. He taught in the Windsor District before he went on to become an administrator. He left us to become an administrator in Surrey County. He retired in Surrey County, and after retirement there, he went to North Carolina and became administrator there. And after so many years there, he retired in North Carolina. He came back from North Carolina, and that's when he joined us on the School Board in 2015. And the one thing I will always remember about Mr. Wilson, whatever we did, or what action we did, or whatever we had to say, whether it was an action or not, any procedure, anything, Mr. Wilson would always ask the question, "How will it benefit the students?" And I will just leave that thought there. Mr. Wilson was an educator that believed in the students. Thank you very much. Are there any staff members out there at this time would like to say something? We would like to... Okay. All right. At this time, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, Financial Report. Thank you. Mrs. Trolinger?
Madam Chair, School Board Members, Financial Report for IWCAS. First, we want to take a look at the check registry and the large ticket items. As you'll see, it's all items $30,000 and up. We'll start off with the New Horizons Regional Education Tuition for Search Students, $123,955. Severance Immediate Holdings, Powell School Renewal, $97,275.80. Hampton City Schools Curriculum Renewal, $65,750. CDW LLC for the device charging carts, $41,520. And last, the E-plus technology for the firewall renewal, $31,346.10. That includes the large ticket items based off of the check registry. I apologize, based off of the check registry. Next, Madam Chair. Want to bring the financial summary to let you know where we stand at this time, IWCAS stands. Incumbered year-to-date for the same period last year, we're at 14.3%, excluding the grant projects. And today, we're standing at 17.4%. So we're 3.1% above where we were at last year, but we're still in a great place for monitoring and keeping the funds throughout the year and making sure that we distribute them in the right areas. Lastly, Madam Chair, wanted to make sure I introduce the Facilities Usage Report. Once again, we budgeted $250,000 in revenue, and at this time, we have an estimated total fees year-to-date, $46,206. So we're above, I mean, well below, but we're moving right toward the $250,000 that we're budgeting. Are there any questions at this time concerning the financial reporting?
We don't have any questions or concerns for. Dr. Coleman? Thank you, Dr. Coleman.
I'm presenting tonight the FY 2324 Budget Calendar. It is an action item. The calendar lists the important items by date, due dates within the departments, and due dates to you and to the Board of Supervisors. We have included some tentative dates for work sessions. Those dates, just want to call them out, are February 16th, February 23rd, and March And again, those are not, even though you're going to vote on it tonight, those dates are tentative at this point.
Right.
We'll certainly set those firm as this process goes forward. And I'll entertain any questions you may have.
Any questions from Mrs. Trolinger at this time? And for those of you in the audience that do not know, Mrs. Trolinger is our Financial Director at this time, Rachel Trolinger, and she is present here tonight at the meeting. At this time, we have an action item to approve the FY 2324 Budget Calendar as presented by Mrs. Trolinger. We need a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the FY 2324 Budget Calendar as presented.
Madam Chair, a second.
We have a second, that we will approve the FY 2324 Budget Calendar as presented. At this time, no more. If we do not have any discussion, we will have a vote. Okay, the vote is 4-0, motion passes. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have the Property Casualty Renewal for the FY 202223. That's an action item as well.
Yes, ma'am. We currently have our property and casualty insurance with VA-COR, otherwise known as Virginia Association of Counties, and this is just our annual renewal. The renewal not only includes the property and casualty insurance, but it also includes our workers' comp.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions or concerns from Mrs. Trolinger? All right, hearing none, this is an action item. We need a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Property and Casualty Insurance as presented.
Second?
We have a motion and a second, that we approve the Property and Casualty Insurance as presented. At this time, we will take a vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have Support Services, Mr. Todd Christensen.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dr. Kramer, I'd like to provide a Support Services update for you all at this time. So the first thing I wanted to highlight was the Transportation Department did have their in-service here a couple of weeks ago, leading up to school. Great opportunity for our Transportation Department to join in some fellowship, develop those team dynamics, which are very, very important in the Transportation Department. We don't often think about that, especially with our drivers and mechanics, but they are really working together every single day. It's absolutely a team effort. Also, it was a great opportunity for them to, our new leadership, Mr. Kyle Blackwell, Andrew Sullivan, to establish their vision for the Transportation Department and moving forward. They've got a lot of fresh ideas, very excited about the energy they're bringing to the table, as well as to get our drivers updated on all the most recent safety procedures, policies, and making sure that we're ready to go. Did want to just give a quick shout out to our Transportation Department. We know that the first few days of school always has some things that we need to work through, but, and the cinder blocks did not help, but our drivers really worked together and were able to get the job done. So big shout outs to them. We're looking forward to a great year in the Transportation Department. Next up, I wanted to highlight some of the renovations that have been done. This is here is at Carrollton Elementary School. Carrollton Elementary School has just turned 30 years old, but when you walk into that building, it really looks fresh and new. It's a building, you can tell that it's a lot of pride that's taken in maintaining that building. But the front office was an area that did need some updates, so we were able to get in there, get some fresh new floors in there. That's that wood laminate that has become really popular. It's very, very useful these days, as well as some new furniture for Carrollton. So we're able to get in and get that work done over the summer and get them some new furniture to kind of match the feel of the rest of the building. So excited about that. Before we move on from Carrollton, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that the mechanical piping work did finish as expected on time. And then it was a mad rush to get SSC in there, the cleaning crew, to get those floors waxed. Huge thank you to the staff for being flexible with us, because we did want to get in there and get those rooms attended to and the halls attended to, getting the same attention that the rest of the areas across the county got. And we did need the staff's flexibility to get that done. So thank them for working with us. And thank you everybody who was involved in getting that work done over the summer.
Thank you.
And last up, I just wanted to give a shout out to our Division Crisis Management Team. So we were able to partner with them to welcome schools and students back. Not only did it provide that extra layer of security, which we're always thankful for, but really having those members of law enforcement, emergency management there to welcome students, be a friendly face, build those relationships, was a really huge step that they were able to take. We had members of the Division Crisis Management Team at every school across the county welcoming students back this year and just continuing that effort that we have to work with them and our law enforcement, emergency officials throughout the year and beyond. So thank you to them for coming out.
Thank you.
And before I move on to take any questions you all might have, I did want to also just mention that we had a really productive meeting today with our food service contractor, Chartwells, myself, Dr. Coleman, some other members of the executive team were able to meet with their senior leadership, talk about the food service. We know that inflation, as well as the supply chain complications are definitely impacting the food service. However, we want to make sure that our food service employees are treated fairly and compensated the way that we want them to be. So that's some ongoing efforts and conversations that we're having with Chartwells. Very productive meetings today, and a huge shout out to all of our food service employees as well. I'm happy to answer any questions that you all may have at this time.
Questions? Thank you, Mr. Christensen.
Thank you.
You're gonna be the next one on the item? Are you, are you gonna?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. We have, we have, Mrs. Getz is gonna join you. Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
That's the M O U.
Yes, so this is the, this is the S R O Sheriff's Office M O U that we brought to you for a second read. It is an action item. So we will turn it over to the board.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Kramer, I know there were some concerns raised about the M O U. And I'd like to take a moment to address a few of those. In most instances, SROs are not involved in the investigations that happen in a building. That is left up to our administrators to conduct the investigation and to administer the discipline. However, there are times that it becomes necessary to involve an S R O. And it is our practice and it is how we train our administrators, that if they need to involve an S R O in an investigation, that they pause the investigation, they contact the parent of the students involved, explain what is going on, and invite that parent to come in to be present during questioning. Now, I will say, many times, the parent does choose to come in. But there are instances, the parent decides not to come in, and in those cases, the administrator will sit in during the investigation. But it is not our practice that we allow, you know, SROs to question without calling the parents. Now, I do want to point out, the one thing in the M O U, it says that matters of urgency may require the principal to be present during the interview if the time does not allow for parents and guardians to be present. In our training, this is, these matters are of safety issues, imminent safety issues, such as maybe there's a weapon that we believe is on campus. Those are matters where we cannot, for the safety of staff and students, we cannot wait to contact a parent and we would move forward. Matters of urgency would be determined by the building administrator, the law enforcement, S R O, whoever is there at the time. And oftentimes, central office is consulted as well. So it would be a joint effort determining, is this an urgent matter that we need to move forward? Do you have any other questions? I'm happy to answer those.
Thank you, Mrs. Getz.
Yes, ma'am.
And Mr. Collick, I know the two of us, we voice our concern on that. Mrs. Getz had an opportunity to explain that to Mr. Cunningham and myself the other day at the gender review meeting. And I, as I told her then, I was glad she had that opportunity to explain to me. And she was gonna, her plans were to come in to do that tonight as well. And I was satisfied with what she told us, okay?
I would appreciate if we put something there, so matters of urgency, and then example given, and a couple of the examples that you put, because I hate to see, you know, a year, two years down, down the line, somebody, an S R O that's not familiar with this, and maybe a principal is not familiar with this, say, "Well, there's a matter of urgency because the buses are coming." Okay? Something that's really not an emergency. And my biggest concern, like I said last month, is infringing on the student's right. And also, where it says, "Serve in the absence of a parent or guardian." If we could put something there, some verbiage, "If requested by the parent." If the parent can't come or can't make it, you know, I'm, I'm all for them saying, "Hey, if an administrator, if this particular teacher could sit in there for me, I'd appreciate it." I think it's still too, for me, it's too open-ended.
Okay. Any more discussions about that concern? Okay. At this time, this is an action item. We need a motion to go into agreement with the sheriff's department on the M R, M O U on the second read. Oh.
Madam Chair, Mr. Collick brought up something. Should we, oh, that's on. Should we wait on this, since you want to add something?
You want to add something?
Yeah. This should be tabled to a later date until we can add whatever Mr. Collick and the rest of us agree should be added. And, and I believe...
It's, it's more clarification than anything else. It's not changing the essence of the M O U. It's clarification.
Okay. If you would like, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Cunningham, Mr. Collick, we can table it if you like, but we could also vote on it with the clarifications added that Mr. Collick just presented. Would you like to do, either way, it's, choice is up to the board how you all like to go forward. But Mr. Collick, since you brought it up, how would you like to go forward?
My preference is to table it, add it in there, and
Bring it back.
Vote on it next month.
Okay.
Madam Chair, Mr. Collick, I'm, I'm happy to take a look at the M O U and make the revisions in red line for your review.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
At this time...
I appreciate that.
At this time, we will bring the sheriff's M O U for the second read back to the board. And hopefully, we will be able to do that at our next meeting, okay, which will be October meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Collick.
Thank you.
Next item, we have New Hardy Update. That's Dr. Coleman.
That's my favorite part. Madam Chair, board members, Dr. Kramer, New Hardy Update. Yes, I just hit it. All right. Trying to get this thing to work. What do we say? Oh, hit it once. Oh, there we go. All right. As you can see, the overview of Hardy at this time, you see the roof that's on the auditorium and the cafeteria now, and moving into the flat roofs of the administration offices and the cafeteria itself, where the food is being prepared. This is the side view from Blunt's Corner, looking on to Old Hardy. So you can see everything's coming together. The installation on the outskirts of the building and the, and the flat roof's going around to the wing E. Since the last meeting, you see lots of construction has been completed at this time. By next meeting, we're looking for all roofs to be actually put on the building, and we'll start moving inside. I do not want to say that we're ahead of schedule right now, but we're moving at a very fast pace.
Okay.
June 2023, we're still looking at completion of the building and moving in. The drone shots are moving around now. You can see just the edge of New Hardy, I mean, I apologize, of Old Hardy, and the closest area of New Hardy to Old Hardy. Once again, it's gonna be 15 to 13 feet away from the Old Hardy complex that will be demoed. We're looking at the two-story section of New Hardy, the, the horizontal portion right there. And all the way back to the front. This is a very good view of the interior once again, and the administrative sections of the building, well, the main office and the vestibule that is, that is being added on. Construction, what they're telling me is, if we can get the roof on before bad weather starts to accumulate, then we can move right through that time period. So that is the rush right now to get the rafters in and the roof on so we can continue to move at the pace that we're moving to make sure that the school is ready. And as always, if you go by the school today, even though that was September 5th, it probably is extremely different at this time with the pace that they're going building New Hardy. Are there any questions concerning New Hardy, the status at this time?
Yes, I have a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
I think I brought it up earlier this year. I put the question out there, it's not the New Hardy itself, but the existing Hardy Elementary, the newest part of that building. I was wondering, I, I asked staff if they could possibly investigate to see if we would be able to save that. And I was thinking about maybe using it for preschool, such as we have at Windsor Elementary School.
Okay.
That is very productive, the Little Sprouts class. And if we could use it for that purpose. And I, I don't know if you all are investigating that, but I would like to see if that's possible, because it's, my understanding, that's part of the school, it's very good structure. And if we can use it, and if it's not gonna be in the way of the new structure, why not just keep it, that portion of the building, and we could use that in the community as a preschool program, which is, the program at Windsor Elementary is independent, but it's just housed in our building.
Yes, ma'am. I will definitely investigate that.
Right.
Next month, I will have more information for you.
I appreciate that, Dr. Coleman.
Yes, ma'am. Are there any other questions concerning the status of New Hardy?
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Coleman, for your update. At this time, we have Mrs. Denson coming forward with the new, she has the New Hardy Brick Legacy.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, Dr. Kramer. First, I would like to say thank you so much for allowing me to come back to discuss the updates regarding the Hardy Elementary Legacy Brick, Brick Program. As many of you know, Hardy Elementary opened in 1960 and has been educating students for over 62 years. So the purpose of this program and this campaign is to honor the legacy and history of Hardy Elementary within the Smithfield community. So with that said, we are inviting everyone in the community, Hardy Elementary alumni, teachers, retired teachers, to actually purchase a brick that will be placed in the columns of the corridor of the new building. As mentioned previously, the cost of the brick is $50 per brick. At this time, we will launch the campaign before the end of the month. We are accepting cash, money order, Venmo, or credit card. So we are also looking into other payment options, but we want to make sure that we can offer all options for the brick program. You will complete the form that we have here. So as you can see, there are lines under number one, and there's 18 characters per line for your inscription, after which you will enter your name, and you will email the form to the name that's listed. We also have the Q R code for the Venmo account, but there's also a link, and the link will be on the Hardy Elementary website, as well as the Alawite County Schools website, that you can click if you would like to pay by credit card. This form is required by all people who would like to purchase a brick, because we, again, we do need the inscription. So it is imperative that you complete the form with your inscription and email it to the name, or you may fax the form. Or if you want to visit Hardy Elementary, before we move into the new building, you're welcome to bring the form and drop it off at school.
Okay. Mrs. Denson, thank you for your report. I know online, if they do it online, but where can they actually pick up a physical report? Are you gonna have those in all of the school buildings?
Yes, ma'am. We will definitely have printed copies at Hardy Elementary. I can email copies to the other principals, and they're, they can definitely print them out.
Okay.
In case community members would like to go to the schools to pick them up.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, thank you. So if you're out there, you heard Mrs. Denson's report, please participate in this project. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, we have the Columbia Natural Gas Services for the New Hardy. Dr. Coleman.
Madam Chair, this, this agenda item is for New Hardy. It's a new gas line. The Old Hardy had a two-inch line, and it needs to be replaced with a five-inch line from Columbia Gas. This line runs from Smithfield, the production plant, all the way out to Hardy. So that's a two-inch pipe that needs to be replaced. The overall total faultless pipe replacement, ooh, I apologize, that was right here, will be $405,138.90. Once again, that's $405,138.90. That's for the Columbia Gas, for the replacement order there. I wanted to make sure I brought that to this board. I wanted to make sure I brought that to this board because it's over $200,000.
Okay.
So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, Madam Chair, that that will be spent to pay for the Columbia Natural Gas Service for New Hardy. Are there any questions concerning that?
What was that price again?
Yes.
And I do know whenever constructions take place, especially that large, when they go in to do any type of changes
They have to upgrade.
They upgrade, because if you, I don't know, I guess some of you have been listening in some of the larger cities where they have not upgraded, they've had issues with, you know, gas lines. And this will take care of some of those issues. They do the same thing with all of the utilities, water lines, gas lines. Whenever they have to dig and do anything now, those companies normally will upgrade.
Yes, ma'am.
This is an action item at this time. We need a motion. Or are there, well, first of all, any other discussion or concerns from board members?
Not at all.
Okay. It's an action item. Again, that price is $405,138.90. $38.90.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the acquisition of the
Columbia Natural Gas.
Columbia Natural Gas Pipeline, increase in size, correct?
Yes, sir. Two inch to five inch.
Mm-hmm. From two inch to five inches, at the amount of $405,138.98.
And that's for the New Hardy Elementary?
For the New Hardy Elementary School.
90 cents.
And 90 cents for the New Hardy Elementary School. Do I need to read that again?
Do it for clarification.
Okay. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Columbia yeah, Columbia Natural Gas Service new pipeline for the New Hardy Elementary School. The acquisition will cost $405,138.90. Did you get that?
I got a combination, the first and the second.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Columbia Natural Gas Services for Hardy Elementary. At this time, we will take a vote.
Just checking, make sure that motion is correct. If you guys want to read the motion I typed in. Is that good?
I can't see.
It says, "Motion to approve the acquisition of Columbia Natural Gas Service Pipeline to increase in size from two inch to five inch in the amount of $405,138.90 for New Hardy Elementary School."
Perfect.
Correct. Okay. Motion passes. Vote four to zero. Thank you. Next, we have item number 15.6, which is also an action item, adult lunch prices. Dr. Coleman.
Madam Chair, just this week, we received the application for Georgia Tyler from the Georgia Tyler Middle School for the National School Lunch Program. And in order to receive the federal funding for the breakfast and lunch programs, we have to approve this National School Lunch Program increase. The lunches for adults, not students, I want to emphasize, the lunches for adults in the building. Teachers and staff will increase from $4 to $4.05. The increase for breakfast will be from $2.25 to $2.35. So, once again, it's an increase for adults, staff, not students. So what we need to do is approve the National School Lunch Program so we can start receiving the funding for the Georgia Tyler Breakfast and Lunch Programs.
Okay. You heard his report. At this time, should like to make a motion? Okay. Would you like to make a motion?
It's on the motion, you know.
It should be.
Is it on here?
It's on the
No, it's on here. I gotta use this one. All right, I'm good. I'll use this one. All right, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the increase of the adult breakfast price from $2.25 to $2.35, and to approve the increase of the adult lunch price from $4 to $4.05.
Okay. You heard the motion. We need a second. I second. At this time, we have a motion and a second on the floor. We will take a vote. Vote, motion passes. Vote four to zero. Thank you very much. All right. Next item on the agenda is report from the superintendent. And at this time, I would like to say we welcome Dr. Theo Kramer to his first board meeting. And, Dr. Kramer, at this time, this is your portion of the meeting, where you take over.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, first day, I think I was as excited as our students going to school for the first day, and this is my first day, that was my first day Tuesday here in Isle of Wight. I had the pleasure of visiting all nine of our schools last week with the staff members prior to our students arriving, and I've visited most of our schools this week as well, and hope to visit all nine schools again this week. I wish to thank every one of our teachers, our administrators, every support staff employee for their hard work to prepare Isle of Wight County Schools for the return of over 5,500 students on Tuesday. Especially our transportation, child nutrition, and technology departments, and SSC had buildings and buses ready to go. Our office staff, school counselors, nurses, media specialists, instructional coaches, athletic directors have all played a role in the successful start of school. A special thank you to Carrollton Elementary staff. They were very accommodating as we were finishing up HVAC work in their school during the professional development opportunities. So thank you, Carrollton, for your patience. It was wonderful to see members of the school board, along with Mr. Jefferson, who actually just left as we thank him, from the Board of Supervisors at various buildings on opening day. We were also joined by Sheriff Clark and members from the Isle of Wight Sheriff's Office, along with Windsor Chief Dan Riddle and Lieutenant Jernigan. The Division certainly has a healthy partnership with local officials and with the community, and it is absolutely my hope and my expectation that we will only expand those partnerships. Working together, we ensure our schools will meet the needs of every child. I deeply appreciate the tremendous support of everyone's contribution to a very positive start of the school year. I also add that as many of us visited schools on the first day, Madam Chair and Board members, we can tell you firsthand that all of the hard work paid off because our students were greeted with lots of smiles and support from staff and others. And yes, we saw a few tears from our students. And we also saw a few tears from our families, and we understand that, those of us who are parents. And Mr. Colick was very instrumental in using his counseling skills specifically with one young man, and actually was able to help that young man progress through the day. So thank you, Mr. Colick, as well. Overall, Board members, I was extremely pleased with our first day, and this was certainly exciting again for me as superintendent. And with this great start, I am very confident that we are going to have a great year. So it was wonderful to have you all there with us, and it was wonderful to have our community partners with us. We do have a brief video to capture, that captured some of the images from that day. So if we can show that video at this time? A special thank you to Lynn Briggs and David Elliott for the beautiful photos.
Thank you.
Okay. That was the first day of school, Dr. Kramer.
That is correct. That was all on one day, the first day of school. Yes.
Next, we have the accreditation and data update. This is still another report from Ms. Superintendent, but Mrs. Getz will Your mic is on.
It's off.
Okay, it's on now.
It's back on? There we go. All right, good evening again, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Kramer. I'm going to share with you the accreditation report and data update. I have Ms. Colleen Loud, our Director of Assessment and Accountability, with me as well. All righty. So each year, we provide you with an update of our accreditation status. So this year is no different. We are bringing that to you. And this is related to our strategic plan, the goal academic excellence. So, let me get going here. On the first slide, these are aggregate results. So they are the overall results for SOL testing in the content areas, reading, writing, math, science, and history. You will see on the left-hand side in blue, these are the state results, and ours are in the teal. And as you can see, we exceeded the state pass rate in all areas for this past school year. And anytime you have any questions, just please stop me as we go. On the next slide, this shows state and division pass rates. And it's important to note that we also are looking at pre-pandemic. So that 2018-19 school year was our last, quote, "normal" year. And then 2020 and 2021, we were coming off that shutdown. And then, of course, last year, we were back full-time there. And you will notice that we're not far off than as from the pre-pandemic. We still have some work to do, but comparing our scores this year to last year, you will notice significant improvements, I think. All right, let's dive a little closer and take a look at elementary reading. These scores do not include growth. These are the raw data. This is before growth is calculated. But we think it's a good point to take a look at these scores before the growth. And you're going to see state pass rates for grades three, four, and five. Those are on the far left of each of those sections, followed by the pass rates for the division, and then the individual schools. Again, these are our reading pass rates. And as you can see, we really hold up quite well when you compare us against the state. Okay, moving on, we're going to take a closer look at math's pass rates for elementary. Again, these do not include the growth, and these are pass rates for grades three, four, and five. Again, on the far left is the state pass rate, followed by the division, and then our individual schools. And again, we do quite well when you look at us compared to the state pass rates. I do want to point that out, which is really, I think, our staff is to be commended for this. Okay, middle school pass rates. Again, state far left, followed by division, Isle of Wight County, and then the two middle schools. Now, I will point out, science is an area that we obviously need to do some work on. We already have a plan in place. Coordinators are putting that in action as we speak. We do, in considering why might our science scores have dropped, science is building. So, for example, in grade eight, that test is made up of grade six content, grade seven content, and grade eight content. So when you look over the multiple years of content and considering what was happening the last couple of years, we're not shocked that this happened, but it does tell us that we need to do more with helping the students in eighth grade, for example, review content in sixth and seventh grade. So we do have a plan that we're putting in place.
Mrs. Getz?
Ma'am.
The writing, I looked at the science, it looked like Smithfield scored a little more than Georgia Tyler.
Yeah, writing is
But then with the writing, it was reversed.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Because Georgia Tyler really, it really dropped like to like about 60%. So I was wondering, you know, are we anticipating a better score there this year?
Yeah, thank you for mentioning that. I did neglect to say, writing is an area that we are also focusing on, not only the science, and I did neglect to say that. We, again, do have a plan in place where we are monitoring and following writing. All grades, but particularly those middle school grades, where we do see that eighth grade test, that's the first time they're tested, it's eighth grade, we do see that drop in writing. We have to do better. So we have a plan in place to have students writing more and receiving more feedback from their teachers.
That's because it's like 5% lower than the states.
Yes.
So at least try to get them on level with state.
Absolutely. Oh, well, we
I want them to surpass that, but you know, right now, it's below it.
Yes. Yep.
Thank you.
Yep. These are combined rates for accreditation for all of the schools. If you take a look, elementary and middle, these do include the growth scores, which is used for accreditation. And I'll give you a second to look through those. Moving on to high school. State is far left, SHS is in green, and the gray is Windsor High School. And when you look at our high schools and their performance in comparison to the state, we are really performing quite well in our high schools, even through the pandemic.
I was also looking at the high school compared to your combined rate, which is pretty much what elementary schools, it's a little drop there, but I guess teenage years. The slide you had just before, the combined?
So, high schools do not have the opportunity to have the growth calculations. So that's why those are straight pass rates.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And growth is a new indicator that has been used now by VDOE when determining the accreditation. So that's something new, and like Ms. Loud said, high school doesn't have that opportunity.
Okay.
Good question, though. Okay, next, oops, next we have our graduation completion index, and performing quite well there as well. Again, there's always room for improvement, but we are pleased with our graduation index. Chronic absenteeism, this is an area that we wanted to share because it's an area we need to improve on. This is not calculated in accreditation this year because the entire state had extremely high absenteeism. Now, obviously, with COVID, we were still dealing with that, lots of students Lots of students absent because of COVID. So that's why the state did not include it in accreditation. But I will say, we have a great plan in place for absenteeism, chronic absenteeism, and how to address that at the schools. We did have training for our staff, and we have begun the implementation of that new plan. So I think we're going to see much better numbers. But, you know, it's very important for our students to get to school. It's critical. And all of our schools are accredited. So this is something to celebrate. Coming out of the pandemic, our staff has worked extremely hard to get students caught up. We still have a ways to go, but I think you can see we've really made good progress. So thank you for that. And then really quickly, I wanted to share just a little bit about our K through two friends, talking about literacy. That's one of the main areas that you hear concerns about what the pandemic has done to our early learners. So I wanted to share a little bit of information about that with you. So we use the PALS, and that's the Philological Awareness Literacy Screening. It was developed by UVA, and it is given to all K through three students in Virginia. So on this slide, you're going to see the kindergarten identification rates. And when I say identification rates, this means that you did not meet the benchmark. So you are identified as needing intervention. So if you look at 2018-19 on the far left, those are the rates of students identified. And looking at last year, you'll see this year, we really have made a lot of progress for our students. So again, coming off pandemic, numbers were much higher. Things are looking much better now for kindergarten. Let's look at first grade. First grade is definitely an area that definitely is, is one that it hits hard. It's a lot of content there, students learning to read. We do have plans in place that we are trying to boost those benchmarks so that we have less kids identified. But it is an area that we are working on. But looking from pandemic, again, we are showing some improvements. Still an area that we have to work on. And, and, you know, kids didn't go to pre-K during the pandemic. They didn't have a pre-K experience. We had a hard time filling our pre-K spots. Now, we have people calling every day asking for pre-K, and we're full. And second grade. And again, if you look at where we were pre-pandemic, to where we were last year, to currently, you see that we are really making gains. Still have room to go, but we are making gains for our friends. And next steps quickly. New attendance protocol in place to address those chronic absenteeism. We have a new writing plan in place. It's already being implemented. Additional resources for science instruction to address those science scores. And we also, if you remember, we did apply and receive a grant where we have tutors in our elementary and middle school that are giving students even more time for reading and math. So we're really excited about the things that we have planned, and I think we're going to see some good results. Do you have any questions for me?
I'll ask mine. Okay. Any questions for Mrs. Getz?
That's good.
Regarding the test results and our students' levels.
Good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I have the next one, so I'm going to sit right here.
Okay. Next on our agenda, we have zone transfer applications and non-resident request reports. And this information is pretty much only, normally if you, public when we finish with the reports, we will allow you to get a report. But tonight, this is only for the board use because of the student's information on it. It includes student information, names and all. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. So before you, you have information for the students that have been approved as non-resident and out-of-zone students. And we did distinguish between employees and non-employees because, as you know, we do allow employees to bring their students to school here free of charge. But we wanted to see, for you to see the, the numbers of students of employees that we do have attending, in the schools that they are attending. Do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the annual professional development. Dr. Kell.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Dr. Kramer. Here to present a, our annual professional development update. So last year, we focused a lot on the introduction of the new growth assessments, introduction of tier two and tier three interventions to really help those students who had missed so much during the pandemic. We focused on the language essentials for teachers of reading and spelling. Supplemental instructional resources, so like hands-on FOS kits to help really push that science and STEM thinking for students, get them engaged in the, in the learning. We did start and launch our vertical articulation of the coding and STEM so that we can create those pathways into those CTE programs. We also spent some time relaunching our gifted instructional model to really engage more students in that gifted, more rigorous instruction. We did a lot of training and work and support with our special education teachers to make sure they had the supports and services and skills that they needed to be successful and help our students. And then most importantly, last year, we did a lot of work around building and establishing the new IWCS strategic plan. So then going into the summer, all of our administrators and a lot of our central office staff, and even some of you, popped in for our threat assessment training, so we were very excited about that. We did a full day of Title IX training to keep everyone abreast of the current regulations regarding Title IX. And then we held our administrative boot camp this summer, as we do every summer, where we focus on instructional leadership, all of those curriculum and assessment updates, management, expectation, strategic planning, and of course, team building. And then last but not least, our conducting and investigation training. Our new teacher orientation was a lot of fun this year. We started off with a little cheering for all of our, our new educators. We're excited to welcome them. Over a three-day period of time, they spent time investigating and, and thinking about how they were going to create great and gritty students over the next year. Looking at the profile of an IWCS graduate, how are they starting to think, even at those lower levels, about what that looks like for students as they enter high school and then into the workforce? Focusing on what is deeper learning? What does that look like? What are those critical thinking strategies that I can use to really get my kids thinking about different types of information in their classrooms? And then also the instructional framework, and making sure that they really understand what that looks like every day and, and how to shape and form those groups during the student work period. We're very excited. This is a, a great picture, I thought, of all of our new, new teachers. And I think that Ms. Sullivan told me that we had close to 80.
Whoa.
Our convocation is always my personal favorite day of the year. We were excited to welcome Dr. Kramer and to see our schools engaged in a little spirit challenge. You can see Coco there, the big prize of the year, went to Windsor High School this year. Post-convocation, we rolled up our sleeves and dug deep into curriculum and really unpacking that, looking at the resources, looking at the benchmarks and the assessments that we use to gauge student progress. We focused on family engagement, truancy and absenteeism, as you just heard Ms. Getz address. Career and technical education met and started to really look at competencies and how we are tracking and evaluating students' progress in that area. School nursing, and then also our reading intervention at early literacy is always really important. Pre-service was jam-packed. So when we started looking at the schedule, we were like, oh, my goodness, wow, there's so much going on, which is a good thing. We launched some new library software. We also focused on Promethean training for those teachers that had Promethean boards. And we did that on two levels, one for the teachers and their interactions with the board day to day, and then also with our coaches and administrators to be able to support teachers as they start integrating that technology in their classroom. We really focused in on that data-driven instructional piece and looking at Freckle and Waterford and No Red Ink, a lot of those different resources that we use, and teaching, helping teachers understand how to use that data to drive their decision-making every day. So we also did a lot of work with special education, focusing on their skills and how they are working with students. I won't read all of these to you because you can see them there, but writing and literacy again, and then, of course, our attend protocol and Title IX. So there was a lot of different options and trainings that were provided for teachers during those two weeks of pre-service. This year, we are looking to focus really on that academic rigor, getting students back into the swing of where we, we have been and where we'd like to go. Professional learning communities and really digging deep in that instructional framework, making sure that's present in every classroom every day. And using data to decide how that looks. What are those small group rotations? How are you grouping your students? What is the differentiated lesson that you're doing with this group versus that group? Focusing on chronic absenteeism, and then family engagement in our classroom culture. How are we making sure all of our students feel like they are included and welcomed and loved in our classrooms? And then also really focusing in on that recruitment and retention because as Ms. Tine said at convocation, we want them to stay here until they retire.
Right.
And that's it. Are there any questions?
Yes, Mrs. Kell, thank you for your report. But I just wanted to bring out that we have some talented students in Isle of Wight County schools. The day of convocation, Smithfield High School band and Windsor High School cheerleaders, they performed and they did an excellent performance. We also had a performance from a young man from Windsor High School that sang the National Anthem. I forgot his name, but Mrs. Kell, or any staff member remember, Mrs.? Mr. Trenton Taylor. Mr. Trenton Taylor needs to be on one of those national, what is it?
American Idol.
American Idol or whatever.
Absolutely.
Because he did a wonderful job. And I knew, you know, that was probably his first time singing before, you know, teachers and staff. And he stood there, and he sang, and he did not miss a beat. I have seen people on national level miss some of the things in the National Anthem. Thank you to all of the students that participated in the convocation. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
All right, now we will have Mrs. Sullivan, Laura Sullivan, come forth. Staffing report.
And Madam Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. You're absolutely correct. As Mrs. Sullivan comes forward, I'd like to make a few introductory remarks, remarks, and to opine on this topic, if I may, for a few moments. I am elated to share with you, as Ms. Sullivan will, our incredible low vacancy rate. Conversely, that means that the vast majority of our classrooms and schools are staffed with highly qualified educators. We hear so much about the national teacher shortage in our country, in our state, and even here in our region. And we in Isle of Wight have been able to avoid that to a large extent. As we stated earlier, I've met with our staffs last week before school opened this week with our students. And one of the questions I asked board members of our new teachers was, where are you coming from? And sort of why Isle of Wight? And we are so fortunate. Other jurisdictions may not be happy with us because the large number of really qualified, highly experienced individuals who are coming to us with 15, 20, 25 years of experience. We are the beneficiaries. Our children are the beneficiaries of all of these employees. And I think it's important to note that they said they're coming because of the reputation of Isle of Wight. They're coming because of the highly qualified leaders we have. And I extend to you, board members, and say that our challenge, I think, moving forward, as well as our community, is retaining these individuals. The last thing we want to do is recruit quality candidates and then, and have, and lose them. So I will be working with Mrs. Sullivan and meeting with our new teachers, as well as our veteran educators, to have conversations about how can we ensure that we're meeting your needs so that as Mrs., as Chair, Madam Chair Tine stated, we'd like them to stay here and to retire from Isle of Wight. So, Mrs. Sullivan, thank you and your staff as well for all of the work that you have done. I don't want that to go unnoticed. You and your staff have done an amazing job, so a credit to you as well. So with that, please share any additional information you have.
Thank you.
And I'm applauding her because I know we have some school districts right there in Virginia. When they opened last week, had 400 openings in one school district. Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan.
Well, and thank you. I definitely cannot take all of the credit. And I would be remiss to not thank everyone from building supervisors and department supervisors, our finance and technology departments, who have done a phenomenal job in supporting us through the process of our new hires. Like Dr. Kramer shared, we are at a 97.7 fill rate for our instructional positions. This hiring season, we had 86 true vacancies. So we had 86 staff members that left Isle of Wight County or other vacancies from new positions. And to give you a breakdown of that, 40 of those were resignations from this past year. 16 were retirees. 17 were new or vacant positions from the 2020, or the 2021 school year. And then 13 of those were internal promotions that created vacancies in teaching roles. They were teachers and they promoted to a leadership role in the division. Of the 56 that left Isle of Wight, we did send out exit interviews to all of those employees. 13 were returned to us, and out of those, 12 did say that even though they were leaving education, they would recommend Isle of Wight County as, as a good place to work for other colleagues. I will be working this year to update our exit interview and allow for electronic completion in hopes of increasing our response rate to that, to get that feedback. Of those 86 vacancies, as of today, we are at, we have had 75 true fills. And in terms of, we've had 75 people replace those 86 vacancies. All but five of the remaining 11 vacancies have been filled with alternative methods. For example, we have two secondary math, one secondary history, one secondary English, two secondary Spanish, one self-contained special education, and one gifted resource that are all being covered by reallocating our current resources or having a current highly qualified teacher teaching an extra block for which they are receiving additional payment for. The other positions, I do think it's important to note that out of the five vacancies that we have left over, those, four of those were extremely late resignations. For, I think most of you are aware that we have a general expectation within our region that after June 30th, teachers do, cannot leave contracts from other divisions to come to us. Four of those five remaining vacancies all happened after that date, which meant no one in our region could apply for those positions and be awarded a contract without getting permission from their district to leave their contract. Because of the critical shortage, districts are not allowing that. The consequences for that are that those districts will go after their teaching license and have it removed. And so it's extremely difficult to fill positions after June 30th. And four of our remaining five true vacancies are a, it is a direct effect because we had teachers that left Isle of Wight after that date. And those were generally from, either they were being promoted or leaving education altogether. And then there's the leftover position, that one extra position out of that five, is actually a split counseling position between GTMS and Windsor Elementary. Historically, split positions between two buildings are more difficult to fill because they know that they're going to be in two different locations. And so that is another reason why that's extremely hard to fill. I do want you to know that of those five, we are actively working to recruit, to find highly qualified individuals. For example, I know with our, our one band position that we know is, all of them are extremely important, but that it currently is proving very difficult. We did have some applicants that applied late. All of them were under contract, and we could not offer that position. But we are working on alternative methods to, to look for support in that in the meantime. Another special note is that 10 of our new teachers are, were actually former IAs in our district. And they were, have worked on their teaching license and been promoted from instructional assistants into teaching, which is a great pipeline for a school division. And that's there to be commended for their hard work in, in reaching that goal. And then we have the two counselors that are still open, that split position, and then resignation at, at Smithfield High School. Any questions for me?
Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan. If we have anyone in our audience that's visiting us tonight and you're interested in any of those positions that she said she has opening for right now, please contact Mrs. Sullivan. She will accommodate you. Maybe you want to, like she said, IAs did. You never know. Get with Mrs. Sullivan. She's senior. She's sending your information to the State Department. You could be certified to be a teacher in the state of Virginia. Thank you very much. Okay, next we have the capital, well.
There we did that.
We have already done that, so we don't have to do that. We're not going to be having an action on it tonight. My mistake. Thank you. 16.7, that's the Bullying Prevention Month proclamation. That's with Mrs. Briggs.
Good evening once again, Madam Chair, School Board members, and Dr. Kramer. The month of October is declared Bullying Prevention Month from Virginia School Boards Association, and we have a proclamation that I'm asking for the board to approve and the chair to sign, and just to read it for the record and for the public. Whereas school bullying has become an increasingly significant problem in the United States and Virginia, and we are, over 20% of the youth in the United States are estimated to be involved in bullying each year, either as a bully or as a victim, and whereas an estimated 160,000 students in kindergarten through 12th grade miss school every day due to a fear of being bullied, and whereas bullying can take many forms, including verbal, physical, and most recently in cyberspace, and can happen in many places on and off school grounds, and whereas it is important for Virginia parents, students, teachers, and school administrators to be aware of bullying and to encourage discussion of the problem as a school community, and whereas the VSVA has developed a model policy on anti-bullying to encourage positive behaviors and to eliminate bullying behaviors. Now therefore, the Virginia School Boards Association recognizes the month of October as the VSVA Bullying Prevention Month with the intention that the issue of bullying and its prevention be discussed in Virginia schools and classrooms during that time. And I encourage the board to approve this proclamation tonight.
Thank you, Mrs. Briggs. You heard the proclamation coming from Mrs. Briggs, and that is one of my, I love to, one of the things as a classroom teacher and educator over the years, I've always, you know, promoted those type things, do not bully. And I used to tell my students that all the time. So, at this time, I would personally like to make a motion to approve the proclamation recognized in October as Bullying Prevention Month in Isle of Wight County schools.
I second it.
We have a motion and all of our?
Everybody wants to say it.
One member's second, okay. Okay. I think I heard the loudest second coming from Mr. Colick. Mr. Vines, one of them. Who wants to own the second?
It doesn't matter.
Mr. Colick, okay. All right. So, we have a motion. At this time, we will take a vote. And while we're waiting for that to come up, the results, if anyone out there hear any bullying going on in Isle of Wight County schools, please contact the building administrator and let them know. Thank you very much. The motion passes. Four yeses. Thank you very much.
And Madam Chair, at the October board meeting, we will share some of the activities our schools have planned.
Okay.
Throughout the month of October.
All right, thank you very much, Mrs. Briggs. Okay, next we have new communication platform. That is with Mrs. Briggs as well.
Yes. Wanted to share with the board and the community that we quietly launched a new communications platform on our website called Let's Talk. We actually used this platform in the spring to gather input on our strategic plan. We only used it for strategic plan input at that time. And then in May, we used it again to gather positive comments for Teacher Appreciation Week, which we shared all of those positive remarks about our teachers with the teachers themselves, so they got to see some praise, hear some praise, see some praise from members of the community and their parents. But Let's Talk is much more than that. It is a way to make it easy for the community to connect with Isle of Wight County schools. It's very easy for customers to reach us, for us to respond, and to get feedback on the customer experience. One of the things I've found is being in a small division, a lot of times people wear many hats, or their hats change very often. And we often get questions, so who's responsible for that now? Or I'm just emailing you because, I don't know who it is, but I know you'll get me to the right person. Well, the nice thing with this Let's Talk program is people don't need to know who is responsible. They just need to know what their issue is about. And I'm going to show you, we launched this very quietly in August, and let's see. Mr. Coop Rider was helping me here. Nope. Where am I going, Mr. Coop Rider?
Mr. Coop Rider here?
Yeah, he's about to.
IT?
Oh, here it is.
Okay, you got it?
Okay, perfect. All right. So, we've linked this right on our Contact Us link, so that's, they were emailing us there before anyway. But now when they go to Contact Us, they're going to see our Let's Talk platform. We have a little introduction there, and we tell them we will follow up with them within two business days. They can search for their topics, but as you scroll down, you'll see we have common topics here. Let me get over here a minute. Okay. And then we have, of course, we put our good news first. If people want to share good news about students, schools, or staff, we have a link for each school, so if they have a particular issue for one of our schools, they can click there, and all of the principals and their admin teams are looped in on those. We have an instructional section with some of our instructional topics, student service issues, operations, and you can see right here, capital improvement plan project. So, as Dr. Coleman mentioned earlier, we have that available if individuals are not able to come and provide feedback in person on the capital improvement plan, and truly they can provide feedback anytime, not just as we're looking at the improvement plan at this point in the year. So, you can see we have quite a few topics here, and one nice thing about this is once again, they don't need to know, who's the contact for Section 504, for example? Or who's the contact for homeschool? They have a question, they can go click and immediately send a response that on our end, we have set up who should get that response. We can also provide information on the front end, and I'll show an example of this. For example, school calendar. On occasion, we will get questions that we'll ask, so when is spring break? Well, our calendar's on our website and spring break is on our calendar, but on occasion, people just want to ask really quick and not have to go find it. Well, right here in the information, it says, hey, here's a link to our calendar. We might be able to answer their question before they even ask it, but if not, they can complete this, they can tell us, are they submitting a question, comment, suggestion, concern, or compliment, and they can tell us who they are, what category they fall into, and how we can follow up with them. Now, they can hide their contact information from us if they prefer to keep it rather anonymous, although we can still respond, we just don't know who we're responding to. They can actually not enter this at all, and then it's completely anonymous. Now, they won't get any follow-up because we have no contact information, but it allows the community to share information with us multiple ways. It gets it to the right people, they get responses quickly, and on our end, we get some awesome data as to how often we're getting communications, how long they've been sitting there unanswered, what's the progress on them. Customers get a feedback form when we close out the communication, and they can rate us on how well we did. If we fell short of their expectations, we can follow back up with them and say, how could we have improved your experience? So, I think this is going to be very positive for the community. I can tell you, it has received a tremendous amount of use with the transportation button the past two days with lots of questions, and our transportation team has been staying on top of them and getting responses to parents. Now, we do say, we will get back with you within two business days. We also encourage folks, if it's an immediate concern, please call us. If it's an emergency, we state there a matter of safety to call 911. Okay? So, but we hope to provide you with updates throughout the year on how this is working for us and the feedback we're getting from the community, and if you have any questions about it, I'll do my best to answer them.
Thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Briggs?
Don't.
All right.
Love it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, this is activated as of now, they can go on tonight and activate this?
It is live now.
Okay.
We just did what they call a soft rollout. We didn't make a big announcement. This is our big announcement.
Announcement.
But they have found it.
Okay, all right.
And they are reaching out.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Briggs.
Thank you.
At this time, we're going to have come to the portion of our meeting where we have action on closed session items, and we have, I'm going to read the list of things that we did in closed session and that we need to act on. First, we have personnel report and addendum. We also have early admissions, that's with a student. We have a second student with early admissions. We also have a religious exemption, and that was it.
Yep.
Thank you. And on each one of those items, we have to vote on them separately. At this time, we will take action on the personnel report and addendum.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the personnel report as presented, a copy of which can be obtained from the school board clerk if the citizens would like a copy.
And we just need to include the addendum, the personnel report and the addendum.
And the addendum.
And the addendum, okay. Second that. If you don't have any discussion, at this time, we will take a vote. Yes for yes. Thank you. Next, we have student EA, it's not student, but Early Admissions EA 22-03.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to not approve the request for early admission of EA 22-03.
We have a motion, we need a second? At this time, we will take a vote.
Yep.
You good?
Got yours come up. Mine didn't come up. There it is, it's up now. Okay. Motion passes for yes. Thank you. Next, we have Early Admission 22-0, I'm going to start it again. Early Admissions EA 22-04.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion not to approve the request for early admission of EA 22-04.
We have a motion and a second. At this time, we will take a vote. Motion passes for yes. Thank you. Next, we have Religious Exemption REX SEP T 22-01.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request for REX SEP T 22-01 to be excused from compulsory attendance requirements as a religious exemption.
Second. At this time, we will take a vote. Motion passes. Yay. Four. Thank you. It was, is it three? I can't see. Oh, there's one nay. I'm sorry. All right, we have, motion still passes. We have three yays, one nay. Thank you. Thank you for correcting me because I can't see. Okay. All right. Next, we have the Adoption of Consent Agenda. That's meeting minutes, donations, and financials.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as attached and presented.
Second. At this time, we will take a vote. Okay. Motion passes for yays. Thank you. Next, on the agenda, we have Policy Updates and Revisions. We have policies for first read and approval. Any staff would like to come up?
Yes.
The policy for fees is one that you previously approved. However, the national beta dues have increased, and so we are asking that you improve the increase from $30 to $32 for students at both high schools.
So, this is why it's a first read because it's the first time we are hearing it, right?
Well, you already approved this policy. The only thing that has changed is a $2 increase in beta dues.
That's right.
So, we're asking that you approve it tonight, please.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, did you hear the report coming from Mrs. Getz? At this time, we need a motion.
Okay, I'm just looking at it. It's not true.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to approve Policy JN as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Policy JN as presented. At this time, we'll take a vote. Actually, what we're doing, public, that is a policy as Mrs. Getz said that we had already approved, but anytime there are any changes to the policies, we have to come back and vote on it again. In this instance, there was a change in the beta fees of $2. All right, motion passes for yays. Thank you. Next, we have Policies for Second Read and Approval.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the second read policies as presented. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve second read policies as presented. At this time, if you don't have any discussions, we will take a vote. All right. 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 Did you hear the report coming from Mrs. Getz? At this time, we need a motion.
Okay. I'm just looking at it. It's not true.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to approve Policy JN as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Policy JN as presented. At this time, we'll take a vote. Actually, what we're doing, public, that is a policy as Mrs. Getz said that we had already approved, but anytime there are any changes to the policies, we have to come back and vote on it again. In this instance, there was a change in the beta fees of $2. All right, motion passes for yays. Thank you. Next, we have Policies for Second Read and Approval.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the second read policies as presented. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve second read policies as presented. At this time, if you don't have any discussions, we will take a vote. All right. Motion passes for yays. Thank you. Next, we have regulations and exhibits.
What happened?
Someone walked up on her. Regulations and exhibits. That's JHCD.
They deleted.
Pardon me?
Guess so.
Okay. It's deleted.
Information.
It's no action, it's just information. That was deleted. There is no action on that. It was just deleted from the policies.
Yep.
Now, we get to the agenda item where the public has an opportunity to participate. This is the, the public get to speak on any non-agenda items. Madam Clerk.
In accordance to policy BDDH-E, presentation of information on any subject will be concluded at the discretion of the board. No person will be recognized to speak more than once. Citizens scheduled on the agenda to speak will be permitted four minutes maximum time for their presentation. Delegations will be requested to limit their speakers to two. Persons speaking or asked to be specific, state the issues for the board's consideration and attach a copy of your prepared remarks. If you have prepared remarks, they should be given to the board clerk. Please do not approach the board members. Any matter relating to specific students will be heard by the school board only in a closed meeting.
Okay, first, we have Catherine West. No, she's here.
It's Mrs. West in the audience. And Heidi, Ms. Heidi Swartz. Mrs. Swartz, I don't want to interrupt you, but I need to go out for a second. I'm gonna come right back in. That way, I won't have to have a recess, okay? And I promise you, I will follow up the tape and listen to your remarks, okay? Pardon me? That's up to the, anyone? You wanna wait? Okay, at this, we will, at this time, we will take a 10-minute recess. Thank you. Swartz is at the podium. Thank you, Mrs. Swartz. I won't say anything else.
It's not on.
Is the mic on?
Uh-uh. It's not on.
Okay, what about here at the table for right now, since we have a technical? Okay, thank you. Let's start Mrs. Swartz's time.
Okay, I did want to welcome Dr. Kramer. I failed to do that earlier during the confusion. So I did want to talk about the Girls on the Run funding. I had someone that brought it to me. It was one of the volunteers that helped out with the coaching. She had stated to me that the coaches were given $750 stipend to volunteer. And she was a bit concerned with it because, well, it's volunteering. There's many wonderful things surrounding Girls on the Run, but paying those who volunteer their service takes away from the whole theory behind the mentoring to these young women. And the question comes up, who provided the $20,000 to pay to the volunteer coaches? Was it the 501(c) from the Girls on the Run? Or did this come from the Isle White County funding? So I was told that Dr. Thornton used the school's athletic funds for it. This isn't hearsay, but this comes directly from Dr. Thornton to Jason Marsh, who we know is running for the school board for Windsor District. And I believe that this needs to be a discussion. At no time should an Isle White County taxpayer be funding a 501(c) prior to other areas of the schools not be funded, just as we've heard tonight with the band and other athletics. Also, transportation, which came the year before in 2021. We found cost the district $300,000 for fuel, buses, and drivers. And the tuition for each participant was also paid from the athletic funds. Activity buses for our current athletics were cut a long time ago, but could these athletic funds gone to this? Now, move on to something else. I'd like to set the record straight. After hearing of many outrageous material emissions of Michael Vines, for those who are not aware of what a material emissions is, it's mistakes, whether intentionally or unintentionally, that would remove one from the ballot. As I, as one of the collectors for Mark Wooster, I wish to ensure I and others had submitted them correctly. So I foiled Wooster's and Dial's signature forms. With Dial being Wooster's appointment, uh, opponent. I found Wooster's with no material emissions, but several concerns on Dial's submission with one blatant material emission. I know I would like to ensure that the number two Newport District has the best candidate that follows guidelines to be placed on the ballot. With this, I have petitioned the Isle White Electoral Board to either amend or add to their September minutes to correct their previous minutes in July, where they listed that three signature packages that were foiled were Vines, Dial, and Butler. This appeared to start an unnecessary racial gossip war in the county by Ms. Butler, which I spoke to Ms. Heinz about after our last school board meeting. And I'm here to set that record straight in this public forum. That Vines was foiled first by Mr. Lewis, and I foiled the next two, which were Wooster and Dial. And it was not a racial issue. I had this conversation with Ms. Heinz after the last school board meeting. And I explained to her that she had the opportunity to also spread correct information if she chose to. From what I heard, this has not been done. So I'm taking this moment here tonight, and I'm looking forward to the Isle White Electoral Board to do the same to correct it. The least we can do, especially for our children, is to provide the best and most qualified candidates to serve them with truth and honesty. On another note, I know you guys voted for the Thornton Career Center. But I believe his job, that was his job, and he was compensated for it. Frankly, looking back, I think that Mr. Kemp has left his job, and he left it when a lot of chaos has been going on, and it was surrounding Dr. Thornton's financial exit. You have to wonder why Thornton wasn't renewing Mr. Kemp's contract. Was he not comfortable with the blank exit amount that was written on his check?
We have Mr. Ethan Swartz.
All right. Good evening, Board and Dr. Kramer. Ladies and gentlemen, I've come tonight requesting that our superintendent and Board allow either myself to work with you or to have someone else work with you to bring the training called Stop the Bleed to Isle of White County schools. You see, I've been a Cub and Boy Scout since I was in the first grade. This summer, I even earned my Eagle Scout at the age of 15. I also became a lifeguard at the age of 15. And I was born with medical condition that had placed me in a hospital setting most, most of my life. And my goal is to go into medicine and start that journey with the CTE program here at Smithfield High School. I understand the importance of medicine, and I have shared personally, as a patient with emergency medicine, I have been, and I have even administered some as a lifeguard. Recently, my mother had a conversation with Ms. Heinz after the last school board meeting. My mom shared with Ms. Heinz how I had discussed with my parents what I would do if an actor shooter situation were to happen at my school. I've thought of what position I would take, the plan of action I would do. And Ms. Heinz told my mother that I shouldn't think, think that way, and it could get me in trouble, and someone might take my words the wrong way. Let me assure you that I, that it's not what I have in mind, Ms. Heinz. I plan to save my fellow students, even at the cost of my own life, if I have to. At the same time, I have my parents telling me that they want me to get out, but that brings me to stop the bleed. No matter how fast professional emergency responders arise, bystanders will always be the first, first on the scene. A person who is bleeding can die from blood loss within five minutes. Therefore, it's quickly, quickly, it's important to quickly stop the bleed. Those nearest to someone life-threatening, nearest, nearest to someone with life-threatening injuries are best positioned to provide first care. And some of the victims in school shootings, not, not from the gunshots, but because of the blood loss, because it is not stopped in time. The program is one step to empowering our students or teachers, our custodial or cafeteria staff, our bus drivers, and so forth, to be there, God forbid we have something happen here in Isle of White. I'm asking you as the Board and as the new superintendent to help me bring this program to our district. Amazingly, when reaching out to this program, I was able to find instructors in our area. One of our candidates for the school board, someone I even know, Mark Wooster, is a Stop the Bleed instructor for the military. I don't know if he would be able to train civilians, but I'm sure he could get us with, in contact with a civilian rep if so. Please consider this. This is not something I would want to come back later and say, if only we had that training. Give us students the training and not allow us just to only be the victims. Let us be more than just survivors, too. Let us be an active part in making our schools better. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have Ms. Martha Jackson.
Martha Jackson, District Three. Chair Heinz, the rest of the Board members, Ms. Kylie Sharp, Dr. Kramer. September 6, 2022 signaled the opening day for nine Isle of White County schools. What an amazing day. Five years into retirement, I thought the excitement would be waning. I felt myself getting just as excited as the students and the parents. Five elementary schools, Carsville, Windsor, Hardy Elementary, Carrollton, and Westside. Two middle schools, Smithfield and Windsor, and two high schools, Windsor and Smithfield. As we welcome our new superintendent, we join in welcoming our community and schools to ensure that we will work diligently to ensure, from our youngest to our oldest scholar, with providing the very best education for all students in a safe environment. When I went to school some 66 years ago, right here in this building, teachers used a bell to let us know when to return for recess. We sang some little song that began like this. School taking in, school taking in. I don't know where this song came from, but we would sing it, and then we would run to our teachers, ready to begin work and work again. My singing skills haven't improved much over the years. I'll have to speak to Ms. Cox Jones to try to help me. Let me be clear. We will insist that public education not be controlled by people who are concerned only with their own agendas, agendas, their own tax status, and their own negativity. We endeavor to be confidently optimistic. No against them because of some schools being located at the southern end or northern end. We endeavor to serve as a cohesive unit. We want to continue to focus on the, on the total child. Successful schools support all students' needs inside and outside the classroom to make them, to help them become effective learners. Continued commitment to equity and access. Successful schools ensure that all students have access to high-quality services and supports enabling them to set and reach high goals for learning. Strong, supported teachers and staff. We want to continue to have our teaching staff, our principals, and counselors. Last of all, develop and growing relationships. Our tech bruus, Robbins and Coop Rider, always make me feel welcome when I come into a building. They extend chairs and do all sorts of things and tell me I can call on them for help. Let's keep the excitement, learning, and safety until the end of the school year, June 2023. Our students, they are our best investment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Mr. Greg Varner.
Thank you again. As you said, Madam Chair, at the very beginning, about being concerned for the prep, uh, the preparation of our kids for college, career, and life, I do share that concern very deeply. I am Vice President of the Band Boosters Club, and I have a daughter who is a junior in high school, in our Smithfield High School. I'm very proud of her, of course. And she is heavily involved with the band, and I have been involved with the band as well the last few years. We have, I fear we have a disaster waiting to happen. And that is going to affect scholarships. It's gonna affect what kids can do and not do. You talked about how the band was, did such a great job of convocation. And what people may not be aware is that they have done all that without a band director. They have done that with their own leadership. And that's something that Mr. Joel Joyner instilled into the band as, as far as taking ownership of what they do. And they, they do it. I'm amazed at what they're able to accomplish. I'm a professional musician myself, so I'm very aware of what it takes to do what they have done. And if you were able to be at the football game, the show that they made, they did that in a matter of three weeks, which most schools take a month or more to fix that, to be able to do that. They are also, so I guess what I'm afraid is gonna happen is that this year, we do not have a band director. As Mrs.
Sullivan.
Sullivan. Sorry about that. And Mrs. Sullivan pointed out, what she may not know, what y'all may not know, is that one of the reasons we are having difficulty getting a band director is because we do have a reputation of how Mr. Joyner was treated last spring in, in his family medical leave and also his retirement. And many band directors in this area, they're a very close network of friends. They, they do not like the way Mr. Joyner was treated. And so, they have talked about, in the whole community, about what has happened. And I, we, and I know a lot of that was due to the last administration. And Mrs. Cuffey, as has already been stated, is doing a phenomenal job. And I feel like that she is going to do as much as she can to support the band. However, with nobody wanting to be a part of, of it because of reputation from the past, I feel like that we need to have.
One minute.
I feel like we need to have more funding to be able to offer a better salary to a new band director. We need some more incentive. If this was a coach for a football team, there would not be any doubt in anybody's mind that they would offer whatever you could to get that coach, to get the best you could get. And our kids have shown that they need the best that we can get. And that's my request to you to look into that. Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Bonner. Normally, I will not.
Normally I will not make a comment on any public comment. But would you do me a favor, please? And make an appointment with Superintendent Dr. Kramer? Because I think he could share some things with you. And we will also follow up with a letter, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Ms. Emily Rupert.
Dr. Cale has taken her outside for a second.
Do we have another speaker? Well, we will take the next speaker until Mrs. Rupert could come back, okay?
Ms. Laura Fletcher.
Good evening, Chairwoman Tynes, gentlemen of the board and Dr. Kramer. So we've started a new year, but we have a lot of things unsettled from last year and frankly, even the year before that. I'm just here asking, critical race theory. Where do we stand with removing all equity, diversity and inclusion initiative initiatives from our curriculum and classrooms? I'd love to have an answer. Ms. Tynes, I would, I would love to have a meeting with the superintendent and get a letter from the board. I'd love to have any response from the board for any of the issues we brought continually to these meetings. I'm wondering about the iPads and our concerns with that, that all, that there weren't guardrails and protections and that there was just this open conduit of garbage that our children could access through those systems. Has any progress been made with that? I'm wondering about the questionably, questionably appropriate even pornographic literature in school libraries. Where have we gotten with that? Have we made any progress with that? Are those removed from Smithfield High School or the other schools? Have we created a process by which we review the books that are in our library? Have we made any effort to include parental input in any of that? Discipline in our schools. Where are we going with that? I know we have significant issues since the pandemic. I know it's hard. I would like to hear as a, as a taxpayer, as somebody who cares about families and these childrens, I would like maybe a ten-point plan on what we do, how the parents buy into that, what's expected of parents when issues come up. I think that could be, maybe the Smithfield Times would carry something like that. I'm also concerned and have not had any response to concerns about transparency in the budget that we had last year. What are your plans to provide a clear, understandable account of spending in the Isle of Wight County Schools budget, documenting expenses for the citizens of Isle of Wight County? We have not had an answer. Mr. Colick, thank you for your no vote regarding naming the CTE building after Thornton. That man was never responsive to us. He was, he, he ran this, this place as if it was his own little kingdom. And frankly, much of the school board fell right along with it, forgetting that they don't work for the superintendent. They work for the citizens of Isle of Wight County. There should be a very, uh, I would like to see a good working relationship between our school board and our superintendent, but there should always be some tension. You don't cave to what the school system wants you to do. You represent the county and the people. And for that matter, all this garbage coming down from the Department of Education and the Virginia Department of Education, I challenge all of you to have the courage to stand against it. It's ridiculous. Just give me a minute because I've lost my thing. Dr. Kramer, welcome. We all want to see you succeed. We need accountability for the benefit of our children and our community. Many in our community, however, are a little wary. Your hire came a little fast. Granted, we needed a school board. We would like to have had a little more public participation. We would like to have had those decisions made by a board who didn't have two appointed members, not unelected. So there, there's an issue with that. But if you come in and you support our children and our families and if you're stand, if you're strong and buck whatever the Department of Education brings down that is anti-family, anti-parent, anti-good for our children, we will support you 100% as we will board members.
That's time.
And I hope we can flip this board, except for Mr. Colick, who's been responsive to parents. Thank you.
Ms. Emily Rupert.
She has said that you can take her name off.
Okay. Ms. Janelle Johnson.
Hello. Um, this is totally out of my comfort zone. Okay, so first of all, I just wanted to say condolences to, um, the Wilson family, the Darden family. I didn't know, knew of the Darden family because of the farm and my kids, they went on the farm and they had their fun. They picked their pumpkins. But I knew Mr. Wilson, I did know Mr. Wilson. I graduated from Sari. He was there, slow down in the hallways, he knew me. I had found out he had a barber shop when I came, when I had a son and I went in there and I was like, wait, that's Mr. Wilson. And he immediately knew me and I was like, wow, I was like, okay. But besides from all that, um, I did graduate from Sari and I had the opportunity to be part of the band. And I wanted to play the saxophone, but at that time, my mother thought it was a bad idea, had a cousin that didn't, worked out so good. So she wouldn't give me the funding. She didn't have a lot to go around or anything like that. So I wound up being a flag girl. We had, um, a lot of, uh, support from our superintendent, um, Dr. Penn at that time. And, um, we had activity buses and, you know, it was just things provided that made it available for my, me to be in the band because I wouldn't have been able to be in there. My mama worked all the time. And, um, you know, it's, it's hard to actually be able to do all those things when you're trying to get, you know, because my daughter, she's in the band and, um, currently, um, you know, I, I, we had to make payments on her trumpet. And it was just, just a lot that we had to do, you know, to get her to, you know, be in the band. And I, I'm oblivious to a lot of this. I did learn a lot by coming tonight. This is actually my first one to be in here. But I just started to stand up and I'm just going by what I was told, that, you know, funding for the band might not be into twenty twenty-six. And then as she graduates in two years, I really hope that it's not the case because they do need a lot of things. And I know we, I couldn't have got through it when I was in high school if I didn't have it. And, you know, I currently can't do as much as I want to do. I currently work two jobs. I had to get off early just to come here tonight. And it's just that, you know, hopefully, I know there's a lot of things need to be done. I know we need a band instructor and I just, I know this, all the board. I'm, I apologize for all the bashing, you know, and all that things going on. I didn't come up there for this. I'm, like I said, I'm oblivious to everything. I know it takes a lot of work and a lot of time for people to come here and do this. And hats off to all of you. And I know that we're going to get something that's better and get it done. I just hope that it's so much sooner than the twenty, than twenty twenty-six because she will be out of school, she will not be here, she will be somewhere else. And we want our students, once they graduate, we do want them to come back and give to our Isle of Wight community. And, um, you know, if they haven't had the pleasure, she only gets to be a student for two more years. And then, you know, she's in the world, she's working. I hope she gets something better than me, you know? I just hope she goes on to do a lot better than I could ever do. But, you know, I'm just, they, they've done an amazing job. They've been on TV, they did the jazz thing where, you know, it was on China Three News and, you know, they, they do really good work. They are working so hard. And I just hope that, you know, we can just get that funding. Dr. Kramer, thanks for coming, appreciate it. And Madam Chair, and thank you all for allowing me to be up here and talk. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Jasmine Johnson. Tristan, did you want to come up with Jasmine?
Good afternoon once again. Um, I would like to talk about what Mr. Varner said earlier. Um, we really need a band director pretty badly because we can, we need, we can learn new stuff. We can learn brand-new jazz songs. We can learn brand-new concert songs and have tons of concerts to have fun with. And it'll be greatly appreciated to, hopefully, we can get a band director soon.
Hello. And when it comes to funding and things like that, and just in general at our band, we don't just see ourselves as the Smithfield High School band. We see ourselves as a band for the community and we love to give back to the community and to go out. And without funding, we can't do what we want for the community. And so it's kind of hard for me to talk up here. Um, so it would be great, we appreciate it, if we could get funding for the band and then we could go out and do things like competitions as well and we can support and represent our Isle of Wight community and say, we got here because of them. And yeah, so it would be great, we appreciate it, um, if we could get funding. And I appreciate all that the board does. Thank you so much for your time and letting us come up here and for all you do.
Thank you very much.
Then we have Ms. Tiffany Walker.
Tiffany Walker?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Hello again, thank you for letting me speak again. In addition to my previous comments about our band, and I do want to say that our band is not just our instrumentalist. Our band also includes auxiliary, which is flag, dance and majorettes as well. Our students had a long-term sub last year. She had no curriculum and our senior band students taught the younger students. They did a phenomenal job, but they shouldn't have had to have that burden. We're now in the same situation again already this year. Students shouldn't be writing lesson plans and teaching other students, especially when the school is paying for a substitute. Our new long-term sub is greatly appreciated. However, she is not qualified specifically to teach band and she cannot sign off on our band students' items that need a director's recommendation or signature. Our band parents are running this program after school with other part-time help, but in school, our students are not getting the curriculum that they need. Our previous director offered to be the long-term sub until a new director was appointed, but he was denied the opportunity to do so. Our calls are not being returned about that situation. I've waited a week so far myself for a call. Mr. Joel Joyner was a tremendous asset to our school, our community and our students. He is greatly missed. He can fill in this gap if allowed. He was the heart of this program and we should be utilizing that resource to take care of our students until a new director is hired. Our current students are missing out on scholarship opportunities, band assessments that will help them get into college and other opportunities that will help them get a career in music. I hope we are heard tonight and that our immediate needs will be met. Dr. Kramer, it sounds like you will be willing to meet with us so that we can discuss this further and we really appreciate that. Our students want to be in this program. They gave up part of their summers to be here for band camp, knowing that we didn't have a director. They want this, they need this. Thank you so much for your time this evening. We really appreciate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think, I think that's it, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And, um, when I asked Mr. Varner, was it, to meet with the superintendent? Because students as well, is that Mrs. Walker that just left us? As well as the students Tristan and, I wrote your names now, and Jasmine. It's very important to me because I'm, I don't know about the other board members. I use, I was a member of Smithfield High School band myself. Okay, that is an instructional need. This is why, when Mr. Varner spoke first, I said, get with Dr. Kramer, okay? Because by the time it gets to the board and we act on it, if you make an appointment, you all can do it as a group where he can, uh, meet with all of you at the same time. Call his staff, make an appointment, meet with Dr. Kramer and he can discuss things with you, instructional things, okay? Thank you very much. Okay, that's it. Is there anyone in the audience that did not have an opportunity to speak but would like to come up now and speak? Okay.
Good evening.
Uh, excuse me, Mrs., excuse me. No, stand right there. Mrs. Jackson, would you? Okay, okay, Mr. Bryant. As soon as we get finished, I recognize you, okay? All right, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, for allowing me to speak again. Dr. Kramer, didn't get a chance to welcome you to the county earlier. Just felt awkward with the, um, talking about Mr. Wilson and Mr. Darden. So welcome to the county, look forward to working with you. One of the things I, I think that your staff is working on, this is an issue that I brought up last year that was somewhat complicated by COVID and some severe transportation issues we had. We've kind of gone back and forth over the years on a policy that allows students whose parents work at one school. For example, if you have students who are at the middle school at Georgie Tyler, that school gets out an hour earlier than the elementary school. So if you have parents that are on staff at the elementary school, we used to allow those students to ride the bus because most of those buses come back to, uh, they go from Georgie Tyler, run their route and then they go to, uh, to Windsor Elementary. I'm sure there's something similar in Smithfield as well. So staff members were allowed to allow their stu, their children to ride the bus to the elementary school where they could then get off and then their parents could take them home. This is extremely important, um, you know, speaking for the southern end of the county with, uh, uh, families where we have staff members from Southampton, Franklin and other places where their children attend our schools because they are staff members. And as we discussed earlier tonight, that's something they're allowed to do. However, they're not allowed to ride the bus and, um, it puts them in a bind for childcare and that kind of thing. This is a 100% cost-free, easy perk to, that only affects a couple of staff members, but it's really important to the staff members that it does affect. So ask your staff to please look into that. This seems to me like a pretty easy win now that we're past some of the COVID issues and hopefully pass some of the transportation issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anymore?
I promise I'll keep this short. Um, it's getting late and I know everybody wants to go home. I'm not sure how much you're aware of Stop the Bleed training as Ethan Swartz mentioned. I don't want to insult your intelligence by no means, but it's a program that was initiated at the federal level in 2015 and it came about unfortunately through tragedy. Just like Mr. Swartz stated, the gunshot wound is not what kills, it's the loss of bleeding. It would be a very beneficial course if you decided to undertake that. The course is only about an hour and a half long. There is a student-to-instructor ratio of a six to one. That allows sufficient time for didactic and practical stations. There is physical involvement, dealing with tourniquets, different methods of stopping the bleeding and dealing with hot zones, warm zones and cold zones. Depending, like, like he said, yes, I am an instructor. If I were to do something like that, if you decided to undertake it, there is no charge. It is very beneficial. And if any one of you would like more information on it, please feel free to give me a call, let me know. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Mr. Wooster. And on your way back to your seat, I did take the training a few years ago with Isle, Isle of Wight County Rescue Squad, uh, Smithfield. We're, um, out here on, back here. And it was quite a few people in that class. It's beneficial. Thank you. Okay. All right, if we don't have any more speakers to come forth at this time, we'll move on to board members' requests and comments. And at this time, I would like to recognize Mr. Charles Bryant from the town of Smithfield. Mr. Bryant, did you want to come up to speak? Did you want to come to the speaker so we can hear you? He's with Planning Commission.
Good evening, yes. As I said, I, I was not expecting to be recognized. As I said, I was not expecting to be recognized. I was just attending to observe pretty much what you all do here, and like most of the people here, the speakers here, I appreciate what you all do, serving the town, the county, you know, the school board members and such. And welcome to you, Dr. Kramer. But, yeah, there's not so much, you know, being chairman of the Planning Commission for the town of Smithfield, it really has very little to do directly with what you all do here at the school, but, you know, school board. The most direct thing that any association was, excuse me, recently, was you all had an application before the Planning Commission to add a special ed building here at the school. That's about the most direct association that we have with you. And that was approved. Of course, as some of you may know, the Planning Commission wasn't too thrilled with the design of that. But in any regard, it's a learning experience for me to be here tonight, just watching how other governmental activities are conducted. And with that, I'll just say thank you for the chance to speak and being recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant.
Thank you.
And earlier tonight, we had Mrs. Valerie Butler here. She's a member of the Smithfield Town Council, and I would be remiss, my mistake, I overlooked Mrs. Butler, but she was here earlier tonight. As a matter of fact, she was here at 6:00 early in the meeting, and she left a little while ago. But we would like to thank Mrs. Councilwoman Valerie Butler for attending as well. And see, Mrs. Butler is normally a member of our audience anyway on our meeting nights. This is not her first time or second time. She constantly comes to our meetings. Thank you very much. Okay, I have one comment, and that was on the survey for the early school start. I would like to request that maybe staff, you can think about it, but I would like to have a survey sent out to parents and maybe, you know, members in the community, because I know all of you are not parents, have students in the schools, and this about their feelings about early school start for 2023, 2024. When I say early school start, that is starting school before Labor Day. And just put a survey out there, and we'll go from the results. And we need to do that soon, because, as you know, the school calendar is probably in the process, right, Mrs. Briggs? Okay, so we would like to get that out as soon as possible to get input from parents in the community. Thank you very much. That's just my request. Anything else tonight? Any requests from any other board members?
Yeah, I have one request. If our school district can look into a policy for snow days, because most of our students now are prepared to work from home, so is there really a need for snow days now, since they have laptops and all that stuff available? A lot of school districts are eliminating snow days, and since they have the ability to work from home, maybe that's something that we can look at also.
Okay, anyone else?
I've got something. When I spoke earlier, I spoke about Mr. Wilson, and I didn't know Mr. Darden, but my prayers go out to his family also. I mean, I never should leave anyone out, but, you know, sorry about that. So my prayers go out to the Darden family. Couple other things, this is going to be quick. I went to Smithfield High School and also Hardy Elementary School on the first day. And let me tell you, the principals, Mrs. Coffey at Smithfield High and Mrs. Denson, I wish she was still here, but she's already gone home, if they ever want to be traffic managers, those two ladies worked. And Mrs. Denson, if she had one of those Fitbits on her arm, she had to do about 20,000 steps that morning. It was unbelievable. So hats off to them. They really worked. They worked very hard, and I know they were sweating when they were done. So that's all I have.
Okay, and to follow up on what Mr. Cunningham just said, Dr. Kramer and I, we spoke yesterday, and we agree that I would say something on behalf of Mr. Wilson, because he was a board member, and Dr. Kramer would say something on behalf of the Darden family, because his daughter worked for, was a building principal. So this is why we split it up, and he said, and that what we said came from the board as well as Isle of Wight County Schools for both families. And Mrs. Buckz, as well as Mr. Brenner, we board members did not overlook you all, but my plans were to do summer Smithfield High School. I keep forgetting you all are on the same schedule. I was thinking I'd move from Smithfield High School over to your building, but I promise I will show up at your building one day when the students enter, and we're just going to make signs and welcome them, and you'll have all of the board members that can come out at your building at one time, okay? And we'll do the same thing for Mr. Brennan and Carrollton, which there were my plans to go there, but I was told you may not want to go down in all of that traffic, Mrs. Tines, because you probably won't get there in time anyway. So we're going to do the same thing for Mr. Brennan and his students. We're going to bring signs and welcome your kids to school one day. If something special going on, just let us know, but we want to do that very soon, okay? Thank you very much. Mrs. Buckz is with us. She's Smithfield Middle School, and Mr. Brennan is Carrollton Elementary. And I know you all went to all of the other schools.
And Madam Chair, I just want to speak a little bit about the CTE building renaming. You know, as everybody in here knows, I didn't vote for it. That's something I just didn't agree with. It doesn't mean that I don't support the vote that the other three members here tonight took. I wholeheartedly support that. I didn't get in the photo because I didn't think it was appropriate. However, when we have a dedication for that building, I certainly will be there, as every school board member should be. So I'm just asking, don't assume that I don't support something because I don't do what you expect me to do, okay? And I'll tell you the reason that I voted the way I did, and everybody knows that I spoke very highly of Dr. Thornton for quite a while. But for me to want to memorialize any person permanently on public infrastructure, he's got to be somebody, she's got to be somebody that's led an exemplary life, somebody that's always honest, always set an example for other people to follow. They've got to have the universal respect of their community, their colleagues, and their subordinates. And unfortunately, you know, in my mind, and they've got to have every single one of those for me to vote for them. And therefore, I was not able to vote to rename the CTE program after Dr. Thornton, and that is exactly why. And a lot of people may disagree with that, and that is, you know, that is purely your right. And do I support the vote? Absolutely, because we did it the right way. And that's pretty much, you know, what I want to say, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kallik. Nothing else? If nothing else to come before this board tonight, at this time, meeting is adjourned, and you all, safe travels.